Hi, everybody. At 7:15, we'll now call this meeting to order. First up, electronic participation. 2.2-3708.3 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, permits members of the Board of Supervisors to participate in a meeting of the Board through electronic communication means from a remote location in certain situations. Supervisor April Demots has requested to participate remotely in the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors meeting scheduled for today, November 28, at 7:15, to be physically held at the Government Center Christiansburg. The reason for the request is medical reasons. Members physically present shall vote to agree to allow participation by other members requesting to participate remotely. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam McClark, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Bowe.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Fajkowski.
Aye.
Chairwoman Evans.
Aye.
Have six ayes.
Thank you.
Supervisor Demots?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you. All right. At this time, I'll ask our county administrator, Mr. Meadows, if he would lead us in a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance, if everyone will stand.
If you're able, please rise, and I'll lead us in the pledge.
After a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have presentations, and we have Virginia Cooperative Extension. Good evening.
Good evening to everybody. Well, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to tell you a little bit about what Extension's been doing. It's been a year since we've given you an update on some of the things we have going on in Extension. And nearing the end of the year, we want to share some highlights of some of the programs that we've been doing. And we have all of our agents here with us tonight. I represent 4H this evening, and we have a written report coming around for you as well. But let me pull up the PowerPoint presentation. Did it get up? Do you know if it came? Thank you. I brought it just in case. There it is. All right. Thank you. All right. Sorry about that. So just sharing a few things about the 4H. All right. So I'm going to start with some 4H highlights. And, you know, in general, for 4H, we do programs with the schools. We do community programs and clubs. We do during the summer residential and day camps. So those are our delivery methods for disseminating our research-based information to our 4H youth. So I wanted to just highlight some of the school enrichment programs that we do. We are just coming out of the COVID restrictions, and so trying to get back into the schools and do more programs with the schools. And we regularly do STEM programs with Falling Branch Elementary 5th grades and Price's Fork Elementary School 2nd grade, and we have about 160 participants there. We do archery in the schools for Blacksburg Middle School, their health and PE students. All of their health and PE students go through archery, so we have over 800 students over the course of a couple of weeks. And so they just get a little introduction to archery. I try to always help out with the stormwater pollution days and do a session on nutrient pollution there. And we're planning our Junior Hokey Showcase Program, which is our Ag and Natural Resources program, to just give kids, you know, a glimpse of some of the agricultural commodities in the state and some of the, you know, natural resources commodities we have as well. And I forgot to mention on this our embryology project. So we worked with eight schools this year and had 487 2nd or 3rd graders to hatch little chicks that they could learn about the life cycle through that hands-on experience. And we provide the incubators and the brooders, all of those materials for teachers to use, and some training as well. After-school programs, we have a number of those. A lot of them are volunteer-led, so I work with college students in the College of Natural Resources and the Wildlife Department and Forest Resources, and they do Wild About Nature programs at four elementary schools. And then we have a wildlife club at Christiansburg Elementary School, and you can see the numbers there. And then our program assistant leads Cloverbud and Junior Programs at Auburn Elementary. Now, the Eastern Montgomery, that's an area of the county that we just haven't had a ton of participation. So the Rotary Club approached me this year as one of the programs I wanted to highlight tonight about, you know, the opportunity for a grant. And so I did apply for that grant, and I specifically wanted to target the Eastmont area because we just don't have as much participation there. So we did an aerospace club. In the morning, I worked with the STEM teacher there to provide that program. And just some pictures from that. The kids learned, they, you know, built rockets and launched those, built airplanes, took a number of field trips. We went to the planetarium at Radford University. We visited the Advanced Engineering Design Lab at Virginia Tech. We visited the airport, and, you know, one of the Rotary Club members is a pilot, so they got up close and personal with an airplane. So we just, we did the Mars, one of the national science experiments in 4H is the Mars Base Camp, so they built little Mars rovers and learned about all the things going on with the Mars missions. So that was one of our highlight programs for this year. Then clubs, we have a number of clubs. You can see here our livestock club, a couple of horse clubs, our team club, three homeschool clubs, our sharpshooters club, had 11 kids from that club this year to go to the state shooting competition, did very well, a couple that are eligible for national competition now. We're starting a new, they're meeting tonight, actually, a new dog club, and I want to highlight that new program as well. So we had 2,072 kids enrolled in 4H either through school enrichment programs or clubs or summer camps, and out of those, 208 were in clubs or special interest spin programs. Then junior camp. So junior camp was a little interesting for me this year because it was, we had, we camp with three counties, Floyd, Giles, and Montgomery County. And so the Floyd agent was, 4H agent was on maternity leave during camp, and the Giles County 4H agent position was vacant at the time, so I found myself leading all three counties this year. So that was an interesting experience. But we did have, still had 211 total kids to go to camp this summer, and of those, 107 were from Montgomery. And we're still rebuilding from, you know, COVID, and we have a capacity of 400, and we're shooting for that this coming summer. We had our first planning meeting today. And we had a number of summer camps. We had a volunteer-led Girls Achieving Leadership Camp for a backpacking trip, a wacky science, fishing, and gardening day camps that our 4H program assistant led those summer day camps. So a number of those. And then just a couple of new initiatives I wanted to mention for you tonight. We are, I've been working with a group of veterinarians, trainers. We have a specialist on campus that does work with just dog behaviors and dog, canine research, and other volunteers in the area. And we're trying to get a, we do have a state dog show, but we don't have, the Southwest District part of the state has very little participation at that event at the state fair each year. So we're trying to build some interest in this area of the state, so we have an area committee that I'm chairing to try to get more kids involved in that. So we just started, we have a volunteer that's been showing dogs for a long time, and they're starting a new dog club where they're working on training, competitions like agility and rally, and dog shows, of course. And then we hope to have a state 4H, have some kids go into the state 4H dog show in the fall. We are, we're planning for an educational clinic in March that's going to highlight all those different areas, training, obedience, agility, rally, scent work, working dogs, service dogs, et cetera. So we want kids to see a glimpse of all the different kinds of projects you can do with your best friends. Okay? And the final program I wanted to highlight, and this is a joint effort for all three of us, we're working with a program called, it's a youth entrepreneurship program, Young Farmers Market Program. And so we are working with the Christiansburg Farmers Market, and this curriculum through Utah, if I can get the mouse up where I can see it, pull that up, okay? So Utah has all these discovery programs, different curriculums in all sorts of different areas. And we chose this entrepreneurship one, which of course is at the bottom of the list here. Did I pass it? It's over here on the left somewhere. Can you see it down? But it's one of the curriculum, oh, there it is, right here on the far left, our entrepreneurship program. And so the purpose of this program is to teach kids how to first understand, you know, what kinds of products that they're interested in, where their interests lie, what their aptitudes for, you know, making things or selling things might be, just learning something about themselves, that's called setting the stage. And then we work with the kids on, and I'm going to close this out so you can see a couple of pictures. All right. And then I've lost my PowerPoint again. Right. So you can see some of the pictures here. So the second session, we worked on helping them describe their products and price their products. So the kids were making these little Santa paintbrushes where they had to do a cost analysis of what it would cost to make that and what they might be able to sell it for. and what they might be able to sell it for. So the unit price of every, every material for that. They're going to, then we're going to work on branding and marketing. And then finally, how to fund and launch their business. And they're going to sell whatever they choose to sell at the farmers market this summer. So we have sessions for them to do that. So all, three of us are working on that project. And so those are just some highlights of 4H. We did provide you with a written report that's got more detail and numbers of all the different programs that we're doing. But I'm happy to take any questions that you might have about 4H programs going on in the county.
Supervisors, do we have any questions? Supervisor Bone?
So.
Sure.
Your report, the cover sheet has educational programs for the citizens of Montgomery County in the areas of agriculture and natural resources, family consumer sciences, 4H youth development.
Right.
Mostly your report was about 4H. Don't get me wrong. It's awesome, right? Especially the programs that you're doing.
Sure.
Can you tell me a little bit about, you know, the other parts of what you're doing, non-4H stuff?
They're, that's what they're doing. So they're going to tell you a little bit about their program areas, so. So who's next? I think Meredith is next, and she's our A&R agent.
Vice Chair.
I'm really excited about the STEM program. So I'm working, you know, in the schools with that because it's so important. And I'm really excited about the dog club. And you might mention where, it's open to everyone in a certain age range, but it's going to take place in Shawsville, right?
It's at the Waldron Community Center right now. So, and the leaders are trying to keep it to about 12 to start with. We want to get some more volunteers trained so that they, because they have their dogs with them tonight. So kids and dogs and two leaders. So we want to make sure it's manageable. And then once they get their, you know, feet wet a little bit, then we'll open it up to some additional membership, so.
That's good. I'm excited about that.
Yeah, I'm a dog person, so I'm really excited about this, too.
Supervisor Fitchakowski?
I just have just one question.
Sure.
When they hatched out all those chicks, where did they go?
We find local farmers that want to take them. And they, they're happy to get them already, you know, free chicks for them, so.
So parents weren't surprised that day?
They weren't. But some, some of the kids want to start backyard flocks. And so we give them the literature about doing that. And so we had some families to start their own flocks at home.
No, that's very good because that's something that's considered even in our local towns. That's happening. I think I saw 18 eggs at Sam's was $11, so.
Exactly. So learning to be a little more self-sufficient and sustainable, exactly. And I did forget to mention, I was introduced as Michelle Dickerson, but I recently got married this summer. So my new last name is Poff when you see it the next time, so.
Thank you so much, Ms. Poff.
Hello, everyone. My name is Meredith Hoggett, and I am the new Ag and Natural Resource Extension Agent. I started about this time last year, but was out for a few months for, on maternity leave, like our Floyd 4H agent. So this year has. Has served as more of a time to really get to know our producers in the county and to get to know what their true needs are. So in starting, I'm just going to highlight a couple of things that I've included in the report for this year. But I created a survey for our growers and producers in Montgomery County because I want to know what they need, not just through looking at what the census tells us, but also what they're telling us. So so far, I've had 53 responses to my survey, which if you know any farmers, I consider that a success. My father is a farmer, so it takes time to sit down and complete a survey, even if it's a few minutes. So here we have the top seven areas of interest that they have identified for me. This is from a list of 19 topics that they were given. So they just chose their top four. And so I'll be using this information for creating programs for this coming year and the years to come. So I'm going to continue to distribute this survey as I meet more producers. I'm hoping to get more vegetable growers, fruit producers as well. I've kind of gotten more beef producers. It's easier to come by. If you go to the, go meet them at the livestock market. I've gone and to several events and different things to try to get to, to meet new producers. So you can see our top seven are in order from what they said were their biggest needs. So beef production, weed ID and control, business branding and marketing, Graz 300, which is a stockpile grazing program, fruits and vegetables, direct marketing to consumers, and insect pests and disease. So this is what I'm going to, along with some of those one-on-one conversations, use to create some new programs as I continue in my position. So this is just a little program that I went ahead and did this year because it has a really broad outreach. So social media, you can hate it, but it's a really great source to get out educational information. And so I created what is called What Is It Wednesday? And if you follow our Extension Facebook page, you'll see these. I post them on Wednesdays, obviously. And it's just educational posts about weed ID, insect ID, topics that we get a lot of common questions into the office so that I can go ahead and give that out to everyone and they can share it with their friends. A lot of times people will tag other people and be like, hey, look, isn't this what you were asking about the other day? So just to share a little bit about that. From 24 educational posts, we had a total reach of 64, about 65,000 reach. And that's just counting one per person. And then the most popular topics, I'll just highlight the first one, was the European Hornet. And that's because we had a lot of people sending in questions and pictures saying, is this the Asian murder hornet? Are we going to, you know, get stung and die? People really care about their safety and they care about their health. So I wanted to make sure that everyone knew this is just the European hornet. It's okay. We don't have them in this area, so. And I also wanted to just highlight this program that I was a part of. This is Equipment Wise and Cattle Wise. And WISE stands for Women Increasing Skills in Education. So along with the other female agents in the state, we put together this program that was held at Kentland Farm in October. And we had 29 participants on Equipment Wise Day and then 31 on for cattle wise. And so for Equipment Wise, this is women teaching women how to do these skills and learn more about it. It just gives them a more comfortable environment to learn. And sometimes they have a little trauma that can affect how they learn these skills. So for Equipment Wise, we did tractor driving. And some of these folks had never been on a tractor before because either someone wasn't comfortable with them on a tractor or they were afraid to take the time to learn and didn't have the time. Because a lot of times when you're, when you're farming, you've got to get things done quickly. So we had people on tractors who'd never set foot on a tractor driving. We did small engine repair, taking apart some carburetors and putting them back together and learning about two-stroke and four-stroke engines. And then chainsaw use and safety as well. And then with our large equipment, we did sprayer calibration and then some ATV and RTV safety. So these are skills that, it doesn't matter if you're on a farm or not, they're, they can be useful for many different people. And then cattle wise, they focused on shoot-side skills such as giving vaccinations, tagging. You can see in the one picture, how to properly tag a calf's ear, which they actually utilize parts from the vet school for that. And then cattle handling and reproduction as well. And then I just wanted to highlight some of the upcoming A&R programming. So in January, I'll have the Private Pesticide Applicator Recertification Class. That's a usual program that we have. But then at looking at those needs that we've gotten from the survey, I can see across the board, despite the commodity, people are interested in weed identification and control. So I have Michael Flessner, the weed science specialist, coming in to present on that in February. And then February, we also began our Master Gardener Training as well. And then this one is one that I'm creating new. So this wasn't in my survey because it was something I hadn't thought about until I got to talking with producers and then also other businesses that work with producers. And one of the things that they had highlighted is it's great that you want to do things on computers and teach them different technology, but we have a population of our farmers who aren't even comfortable using their smartphones. And they don't know how to fully utilize that. So I've been creating this program that's going to be called Smartphones for Smart Farmers. And I think it's going to be a couple of different sessions. But the first one's just going to be on basic cellphone use. And we're going to have the Montgomery County Young Farmers come and help. And that way they can give one-on-one assistance at the end so that they can ask questions about their specific needs. But also because we all have different phones, right? And it's, and some things are a little different. But we'll teach them things like how to send a picture, how to email a picture to an Extension Agent so that we can properly identify something for them. How to schedule things on their calendar. Farmers are busy. It's hard to remember everything when you have something break down and you're working on it, a piece of equipment. So things like that. So it's a program that I'm really excited about. And I'll just highlight, that's a picture of my father. So he's inspiration for some of this because he was one who did not have a smartphone until he was on the board. And he was like, I don't need this. And then I showed him, hey, this is what you can do with it. And now he loves it. And he says, in some cases, it can save your life, too. He's been attacked by a cow in the field and some people don't think about that as a safety measure as well. So those are just some of the programs I'm looking forward to. And I'm eager to get in and start helping our producers in the county. If you have any questions, I would love to take them.
Thank you, Ms. Hoggett. We'll go around the room. And does any supervisors have any questions or comments? Supervisor Bone?
Tell me a little bit about Montgomery County Young Farmers. Is that part of the Extension or is that something totally separate?
So Young Farmers is Farm Bureau. So they have the Montgomery County. And then there's also the Virginia Tech Collegiate Young Farmers Group as well. So both of those groups are hopefully going to be helping with that.
Thank you.
Anyone over here? Supervisor Fitchakowski?
Yeah, I really do appreciate all the programs that you do for our citizens because it, you know, even though you may not pack the room with, with folks, there are just a lot of people that need answers. And I've always told them to go talk to you all because you have the answers. But I really appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Ms. Hoggett, again, I think, and again, we talked earlier this year about the smartphones for smart farmers, about applications, and even there are some applications for identifying some of the weeds or plants. And then just, I think that's great. And we look forward to working with the young farmers to do those type of educational programs. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, short one. So I'm Dawn Barnes. I'm the Family Consumer Science Agent in Montgomery County. But I'm also a little different. I have some responsibilities in Floyd County also. The report that you have in the packet is a reflection of some of the programming that I have done personally. But we also have Angie Helm, who is a Food and Nutrition Program Assistant. We all have our titles. It makes life interesting. Family Consumer Sciences, just to give you a little bit of an update. Some of the things that we address are nutrition, health and wellness, financial literacy, food safety in the way of Serve Safe, which is a class that we partner with the Restaurant Association and then work with the Health Department. And we offer their Serve Safe Master Classes so that those that have to have that certification in the restaurants can come and take the test. And then we send the results off to have them tested. Last year, I think I had 71 total in the classes. 17 of those, I believe, were from Montgomery County. I'm still waiting for a test from a November 18th class, but all one, all but one passed. So that's a pretty good indication of hopefully of what our food service, food handlers, their knowledge base. Something a little bit different that we did this year that I was involved in. There's a Virginia Tech Public Health Class that works with master-level students. And it's the Methods of Community Engagement. This particular class gets them into the community. And their responsibility was to go and do a map of visual mapping asset and then do an asset mapping of what some of the strengths and weaknesses are in the community. And many of them that were in the group that were in Montgomery were not rural-based. So they chose, they wound up choosing Eastern Montgomery as the area. We are, hopefully in the next week or two, we'll hear a report back from them. But this class does the asset mapping. And then the future class will look at that asset mapping report and then possibly look at some of the resources or maybe some classes. But some, what are some of the things that they might be able to plan after that in relationship to the public health subject matter? And I don't know what they've identified yet. So I'm waiting very interestingly to see what they come up with. So the Serve Safe, the other thing when we talk about food safety is food preservation. And this year, we've addressed canning, both water bath and pressure, which are two different sources. And if we can keep people doing that correctly, then we can hopefully keep people both safe and also giving them the resources to have canned goods on and through past the garden season. And that number, believe it or not, has increased in the last couple of years, those that are interested in it. I'll close with just giving you one of the examples because you can read through all the other things. But Angie shared an experience she had. And it's always nice to hear and see the aha moments because unfortunately, we work with the youth, we work through the adults, but we don't always get to see the aha moment. And Angie was in the grocery store. And as we oftentimes do when we're out in the public, someone will stop us. We sometimes jokingly say, oh, yeah, they'll be here later, but I bet you they got caught by three people with cushions on the way. But she was in the grocery store and one of her former participants from her class stopped her and said, look in my grocery cart. And this particular participant didn't cook anything from scratch. And she either bought pre-prepared or she ordered out. And her grocery cart was full of things that she can now make healthy dishes for her family and not prepackaged and not from cooking out, so, I mean, ordering out. So those are the kind of things that we don't get to hear, but we are happy when we can hear them that, you know, we are indeed making some differences. And that's what we're, our goal is, and it's nice to have that verified from time to time. Any questions?
Excellent. Any questions? Supervisor Demonts, any questions?
I did want to ask if the packet that was passed around, if that could be set aside for me to get a copy of it? And then just to add on the Equipment Wise program that was conducted, I was just this close to registering to participate in that program. What an awesome thing that you did there. I really appreciate all of the work that all of you do. And maybe in the future, I'll participate in that one. Thank you all.
Thank you. We'll make sure we have a packet for you, Supervisor Demonts. Yes. Thank you, ladies, for your presentation. All right. Up next, we have two public hearings scheduled for tonight. The first one will be rezoning Roanoke Valley Holdings LLC. And I see Ms. Bree Hopkins coming to the front. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Sherri Blevins. We do have a request for a rezoning of 33.54 acres. This is 15 acres will be going to RM1 if approved and 18 acres to residential R3. This property is located just outside the town of Christiansburg. You can see it denoted there by a star. And then we have blown this up so you can see, this is Pepper's Ferry Road, Route 114. This is the intersection with Walton and Price's Fork. So it is right outside the town limits. This is the flat aerial view of the property. It does currently have a dwelling here and then a dwelling here on those two parcels. This is the New River Landing Mobile Home Park. These are the townhouses. And there's some across the street here that is an RM1 zoning. So here's the zoning map. The property is surrounded by R3 and RM1 zoning and Agriculture A1. So there's a huge mixture there. This large parcel here is occupied by Grace Baptist Church. So the property does consist of two parcels. So the property does consist of two parcels. The request is to have fifteen point seven, zero seven acres from A1 to RM1 to allow the construction of apartment units and duplex units. And then eighteen points four seven acres from A1 to R3 for single-family residential units. These are some drone images that we obtained with the help of public information. If you haven't noticed, we really like using them for our drone work. It does give us much better images and you can actually see the topography versus just a flat aerial image. So you can see 114 is here on the right-hand side of these pictures. And the property is basically, you can almost see the boundaries just with the tree line. This is another view looking from the rear of the property. And you can see 114 kind of in the distance there. And then this, you can see the edge of the Mobile Home Park and 114 is kind of in this upper corner. This is actually taken from the ground. We are at the entrance looking back into the site. You can see Grace Life back in the distance here with the residential house here behind those trees. And then this is looking on the other far side of the property. These pictures were taken from the entrance looking towards Radford on 114 and then back towards Christiansburg on 114. This is the concept plan that the applicant submitted with their rezoning request. The red dashed line is the indication of where the zoning would be split. So RM1 is in this area. You can see these are the apartment units. These would be the duplex units. And then everything on this side would be R3 and that would be the single-family residential. So the project does consist of two hundred and one residential dwelling units total. I'll go through those three types separately. This is the multifamily building style example. These will be the apartment units. Approximately one hundred and fifty units will be divided between the seven apartment buildings. There will be a mixture of one and two bedrooms. And there will be a pool and clubhouse that will be contained within that complex. This is an example of the duplex units. There are twelve of those, so six structures with two units each. And they're located kind of in behind the apartment complex. And then thirty-nine single-family residential lots. These will mainly be three and four-bedroom units. And these are some architectural renderings provided by the applicant for what those could look like as well. So the applicant has proposed twenty-five percent of the RM1 area and thirteen percent of the R3 area will be dedicated as open space. Everything in blue is non-recreational open space. The green is recreational open space. So this, this is the area for the pool and the clubhouse. And then this area here has a trail, which actually connects into the sidewalk system going through the road network and a small play area here. They have proposed one entrance and exit for the property along Pepper's Ferry Road. They do have seven hundred and ninety-one feet of road frontage. The entrance is sited towards the middle of the property. At one time, it was further to the right side of the property if you were standing in the road looking at it. But they have moved it more to the middle. And that alignment has partly to do with the other intersection with Rolling Hills Drive across the road, but also the ability to put the apartments on that other side. So the use is expected to generate fourteen hundred and sixty-five trips per day. AM and PM hours are both in the seventy vehicles per hour realm. It did not meet the threshold for a VDOT mandated traffic impact analysis. However, they did do a turn lane analysis. And that was conducted and reviewed by county staff and VDOT. There is a need for a right and left turn lane, including taper and storage. And you can see that they have put those in here on this concept. The final design will need to be done during site plan review to ensure that they have the width and all of that there. But this is a concept rendering. Based on the VDOT access management standards, the improvements will accommodate the projected traffic conditions in 2027 at full buildout. So four new major roads will be constructed. They're labeled here as Road A, B, C, and D. These will be public roads taken over by the state once they meet their requirements. The apartment and parking area will be privately maintained by homeowners association or some other maintenance agreement. And VDOT has stated that they have no objection to the proposed rezoning. Public water service is available. It will be provided by the town of Christiansburg. The applicant will have to install an eight-inch line to connect the development to the public system. There may also be a second line required to provide that redundant loop. That will all be determined during the site plan review stage if approved. Fire hydrants are also proposed to be installed. That is according to county code, and those will be connected to the public water system. Sanitary sewer is currently not adjacent to the property. However, there is a utility easement in existence to extend sanitary sewer from New River Landing, the Mobile Home Park there, from Belmont to the Mobile Home Park. So if that has not been extended by the time of this development, it would then be up to the developer to provide that full extension to their property. Service will be provided by the town of Christiansburg. And it is possible some portions due to that topography would have to have a pump station installed. But again, that's something we would have to look at at site plan stage. The town of Christiansburg has provided an availability letter for both water and sewer. And all those infrastructure improvements that would be required will be at the cost of the developer, not the county or the town. The project does not lie in a FEMA-designated flood zone area. They have made provisions for dumpster and recycling to the multifamily portion of the development. The single-family and duplex structures will be served by individual garbage collection. The applicant does propose the five point six acres of open green space throughout the property and an additional thirty thousand square feet of active recreation space. That active recreation space, including the pool and the clubhouse, will be accessible by all residents of the subdivision. So even those in the duplexes and the single-family residential units. A full landscape plan will be required at site plan review. Buffering will be required during the different, between the differing housing types. The applicant has proffered an evergreen buffer along the western property boundary shared by the neighboring property. They have worked with that adjoining property owner. Originally, when the request came through, the apartment units were actually on that side. And so they've, the property owner come forward and had some concerns. So the applicant worked with them, relocated the apartments, and then provided that evergreen buffer there from that adjoining property owner. The applicant does intend to preserve as much of the existing vegetation as possible. Montgomery County Public Schools has anticipated that this would increase by approximately one hundred and twenty-one students into the system. That would be upon full buildout. So that will be a gradual increase. They have expressed concern about the ability for the buses to turn in the cul-de-sacs. However, since these will be state-maintained roads, they will be required to meet that minimum turn radius, which would accommodate the buses. The schools did state that if they could not have a turn radius that met that requirement, then they would prefer to have a bus pull-in near Pepper's Ferry Road. We have also said as staff that consideration should be given to some type of bus shelter or bus pull-in just because this is a good area for public transit to eventually extend. We currently have, Radford Transit runs this road from Radford to the New River Valley Mall location. So if and when we do decide to put public transit out into the county, this, this would be one of the routes that we would look at very closely, I believe. This is in an area designated as urban expansion. You can see this gray area here is the town and the red is the urban expansion area with this in the middle. It is the preferred location for new residential and non-residential development. It's basically a natural expansion area that we've identified when we've done the comprehensive plan. It should be compatible development with things that are located within the corporate limits. This is the standard criteria for reeval, for evaluating rezoning applications. You all have seen these multiple times, so I'm not going to review them all. Staff did review them and the proposed development does meet the criteria for consideration of the rezoning request. In addition, staff identified these planning and land use sections that we felt were in compliance with the plan. There are several here. Again, I'm not going to take the time to read these because a lot of them you have seen in the past. But these are our reasons that these, those sections are justified. So it is in the preferred location for new development. It is compatible with development currently occurring within the corporate limits. It provides housing of a variety, of a varied density and type. And public water and sewer service are available on the site or can be obtained. And it connects to Pepper's Ferry Road and it does provide a future interparcial connection. These are the environmental resources that we felt were being met. Basically, it's going to preserve as much of the existing vegetation as possible. It's also going to retain some open space and there will likely be some additional vegetation added to the area. They will also have to meet any appropriate stormwater and erosion and sediment control measures as they go through the process. Housing and transportation. The proposed development provides interconnectivity to the existing street network. It will utilize Pepper's Ferry Road as its main entrance. And it does provide a proposed future interparcial connection to the west. All roads will be developed to meet VDOT standards and sidewalks will be provided throughout the development. So the subject property does qualify for the rezoning. It is located within an area of urban expansion. It provides high-quality housing for the county with a variety of options. Many of you may remember back in 2020, 2021, we had a regional housing study that showed the whole New River Valley was at a desperate housing shortage. So while this doesn't totally take away that shortage, it does help toward it. It does provide common amenities for the resident and it does provide connectivity with the development of the sidewalks and the trail. The proposed turn lane improvements, entrance road, and street network are designed to accommodate the traffic demands. And the proposed interparcial connection does meet interconnectivity requirements. They, the expansion of public water and sewer will benefit various residences. So if that sewer extension has not come through New River Landing at the time of this development, then when that extension is put in, it then opens up that public sewer connection for New River Landing. And they are having a situation in that Mobile Home Park where they cannot replace units currently because of failing septic. So consideration should be given to bus accessibility and public transit. And the impacts to adjoining property owners were mitigated by reconfiguration of that development. So the Planning Commission recommended approval with proffered conditions. And that motion passed on a five-to-two vote. Mr. Linkus and Ms. Simkins were opposed and Mr. Foster was absent. So the two proffered conditions are the property shall be developed in general conformance with the master plan by Balzer and Associates depicted on Sheet Z3 dated July 1, 2022 and revised October 13, 2022. The applicant shall install an evergreen screening buffer of Leland Cypress along the common parcel line between parcel ID 020970 and 002562, as depicted on Sheet Z3. The evergreen tree shall be six foot of height at the time of planning and should be planted fifteen foot staggered on center. Joining property owners were notified. Public hearing signs were also placed on the property. The legal ads have ran in the Roanoke Times. And at the Planning Commission public hearing, we had three speakers. One was in favor. Two expressed concerns regarding traffic. Two inquiries were received by staff. One of those was that adjoining property owner that the applicant has worked with to address their concerns. The other was an email which was forwarded to you all today, I believe. So it just come in this morning. Additional comments may be received during the public hearing by those present. Mr. Simonas with Balzer and Associates is also here to answer any questions that you should have that I'm unable to answer. And with that, I will take any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Bree. We'll go around the room. We'll start off with Supervisor Bum.
No, no questions. Thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd.
Was there a reason given for the two that opposed the Planning Commission?
They were both traffic concerns, the traffic on 114.
Okay, that's all I have.
Supervisor Demont?
Thank you. I had just a couple of questions. Are the duplexes scheduled to be for rent or are they scheduled to be for, for ownership?
That I am not sure, but I'm positive Mr. Simonas could answer that for you.
Okay. And then you mentioned in your presentation, excuse me, I'm sorry. You mentioned in your presentation that there would be like a HOA or some sort of management on site. Would that be operated as part of the apartment community, the clubhouse there? Will there be property management on site?
So yes, the HOA will be required to maintain those joint amenities such as the clubhouse, the pool, any active recreation areas, and then stormwater management area and any additional open space. They'll also have to ensure that the landscaping is maintained in viable condition. Normally, what happens is if this gets approved, Marty will review the HOA conditions prior to us finalizing the plat to ensure that all of that is, is in place and, and legal. As far as if they will have someone on site, I am not sure.
Okay, that might be a good question for Mr. Simonas as well. And then a final question for the single-family homes that will have to do individual garbage collection. Where is the nearest convenient site to the property? Is it the one on Price's Fork, probably?
Probably Price's Fork, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Chair Blevins?
Thank you. Supervisor Fidjikowski?
Do you know what the setback is? I see that lot number one is fairly, looks fairly close. I know it's not probably in scale, but if, if 114 was ever to be four-laned, would that interfere with that?
I would not think so. Most of 114, we have adequate right-of-way. We don't have to obtain a lot of the right-of-way because there's a hundred-foot right-of-way throughout most of, of Price, of Pepper's Ferry. So I'm not positive. That would be treated as a corner lot. So the front property line would actually be on Road A. And then it would have a set, this would be a side street setback. So that's normally twenty foot. So it'd be forty foot off of Road A and twenty foot setback on this side. But there will also be a landscape buffer required in that area as well.
Okay, well, my concern was if and when and ever.
Then there's a road on top of the house.
Because that would be something very important to our county on Route 114 because it is such a busy highway. I mean, here it is, 2022. I retired from state police in 2007 and it was probably by far a road that I worked more fatalities on than any other. And so I know traffic is, is a big concern to everybody. And I, it must be just the way the road lays. I mean, it, it kind of encourages people to speed. And I, I know VDOT has done several things to it to try to, to slow folks down, but I'm sure that's still a big concern. The other one is you mentioned about the school buses. So there is or there isn't enough room to turn a bus around in those cul-de-sacs?
So if the roads are built to state standards, which is what is proposed, then there will be enough room because automatically they have to meet that turn radius.
Okay, because they're using seventy-seven passenger buses. They're pretty big.
Yes.
So it's still with it work. Okay. Thank you.
That's, that's my understanding in conversations with VDOT.
Thanks.
Supervisor King?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
On the turnaround, you know me, I'm a big advocate for it. How many fire hydrants are they proposing in all these units?
So we require a fire hydrant to be within five hundred feet of each structure. So each dwelling. So how many ever that would work out, they haven't laid it out yet. But they would, there would have to be a, a fire hydrant within five hundred feet of each, of each dwelling.
Okay. To go on what Steve was just talking about, the bus turnaround. So you can put them in there that they have to do that, right?
It'll be, it'll be a VDOT requirement because their proposal is that those will be state roads. So they will have to meet VDOT state requirements.
But what I'm saying, though, they say it's proposed a state road. But just say, once they start doing it, they say, well, we're not going to do that.
That would not be possible because it would be a substantial change to the plan. So they would need to come back.
Have to come back, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Thanks for the update there. Just a couple of things right now. First, with the one entrance and one exit. did anyone ask emergency services about that?
So this is all forwarded, we have a plan review team that this goes through before it even goes to planning commission. And that goes to several different members. One of those is the emergency services coordinator and he did not have any comment. Um, so he he recognized they were going to have fire hydrants. He recognized the cul-de-sacs were going to accommodate the emergency vehicles. So he did not have any comment about the single entrance. Um, the inter parcel connection and and I should have showed that during the presentation, but that is here at the end of road B. So should this property be developed, which we have already been contacted about? Um, then that inter parcel connection would possibly allow for another entrance that would be further down on Pepper's Ferry.
Okay, because I was just thinking if there was some kind of.
Yes.
Disaster. Usually they like to have more than one way to get in.
Correct.
Okay, and then um when specifically people were concerned about traffic, were they concerned about the number of cars that were going to be on the road or were they concerned about site distance and how people were going to get in and out?
So I think all of the above. We heard a lot about the amount of traffic on one fourteen. And then we heard a lot about issues with people who currently slow to turn into rolling hills. And then it can back traffic up especially during peak hours because there is not a turn lane there for that. And they were concerned about people stopping suddenly to turn in and then getting rear ended. Um, so there were a couple of different scenarios that that were discussed at the public hearing.
Okay, and remind me of if everything went the way it was planned, what the the total build out, how long would that take?
Um, so they're saying twenty twenty seven, I believe.
So that would be five years and a hundred and twenty one more students. That would be impacting the schools.
Correct.
In five years.
And those school, those students would go to Bellevue Elementary and then the Christiansburg Strand.
Do they have capacity for that, the schools?
The schools did not say if they had capacity. They just said it would be adding a hundred and twenty one students to the system.
Okay, thank you.
So that figure was obtained from the schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Ms. Bree. Thank you for the presentation. I do have um several questions. If we can go back to the slide where the proposed turn lanes are.
Well, maybe we can.
Yeah, I saw it somewhere in the beginning, I think.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's here.
Okay, I think it is. All right. So the red here is that's that's road A, the main entrance and exit.
Correct.
And right now, that would be the only one unless the property adjacent down the road could be developed and that would be another entrance.
And a secondary entrance.
From off of route one fourteen and connect to road B or C down, further down. Okay. So you see how close those turn lanes and the taper lane becomes right in front of Rolling Hills.
Yes.
And then down here, Dominion Drive.
Correct.
From coming in because there we're we're proposing two, a left and right turn.
Correct.
With my background for driver education and safety, I can already see without these turn lanes that we do have problems at both those intersections. Even though it's flat and it is a forty five and then thirty five right there at Dominion Drive as you just a little shy there of it. There have been number of rear end collisions. How will that affect? You know, if you're coming in, I see I'm trying to say people are going to be waiting in line to turn left into this new subdivision, blocking people from making a possible right or a left turn. You see what I'm saying?
Oh, I see. You're saying they'll stack up further and then you won't be able to turn right into Rolling Hills.
We call those sometimes suicide lanes and where you have shared left turn lanes. Is that's what will be proposed there?
Um, I I do not think so. I think it is a right and a left hand designated turn lane only.
Okay.
Steve Simonas can speak to that. He did work on these turn lanes with VDOT. And I know that that did impact where they put the entrance as well. And actually, I think this entrance was preferred because initially it was down here and so it it created a a larger issue for Dominion Drive. Um, so I I believe this was actually done on suggestion at VDOT, but I'll let Mr. Simonas speak to that.
And then it's estimated with this, with the two hundred and one um housing that the uh traffic would be over fourteen hundred additional.
Correct.
Uses. So that's a lot coming in and out from just that. Um, not to not to mention that it is a route one fourteen is a huge commuter route between Radford and Blacksburg and Christiansburg and an alternate route in case there's something going on on the interstate as well.
Correct.
We just had a speed study by VDOT for this. It took over two years to get that recommendation um to lower the speed limit a little bit further. It doesn't really affect this area here. Um, but in since two thousand eighteen till twenty twenty one, there were over two hundred eight accidents on route one fourteen. The majority of those being or a good percentage of those being rear end collisions where people are stopped or slowing down to make those turns into those subdivisions. So I'm very concerned with traffic. Um, I constantly hear people talk about route one fourteen. Um, I also am concerned sometimes when you get up here near Dominion and where uh with school buses might be turning or slowing down um that people don't stop properly. And I am concerned with that one entrance. Um, because that's a lot of traffic going in and out of just the one entrance. Uh, the round, the turnarounds, the school said that they were had a concern already voiced by some of my supervisors that it would be by state standard. I also noticed in the application information that it will allow parking, street parking. Is that parking on both sides?
So that is not something that we regulate as far as the county because we do not have an ordinance that regulates that. So it would be up to the developer to regulate whether or not they allowed on street parking.
And so if they did even have the width for the turnarounds, if there was street parking on both sides.
That could impact the turn.
A fire truck, emergency vehicles with one entrance and exit out. So that would be a concern. Um, and they they might be able, the applicant might be able to address that for me. On the parking for the um apartments, do we know how many parking? What is the requirement for spaces for each of the dwellings?
So it's it's based on the number of bedrooms for the apartments. Um, so once we determine how many one and two bedroom apartments there are, then we can determine the parking. Um, however, I would say just based on first glance, I I think they have definitely shown enough parking, if not maybe too much. Um, so there might be actually less parking required.
And that could alleviate street parking as well.
Good.
Could. Okay. And um, let's see here. What do we know? And this might be the applicant to to address this. What is the for the three and four single dwelling um houses? Do we know the average cost?
I do not know the average cost.
Okay. Do I have any other? Thank you, Bree. Do I have any other follow up? Supervisor Shepherd.
So I had a conversation with the, I'll probably get his last name wrong, Mr. McHale. Is that right? Uh, with Fraylon this afternoon. And um, one thing I discussed with him that I didn't hear anybody say here, and I know you're probably going to look at me and say, there he goes again. What about if we dropped the speed limit down to thirty five like it is in the town of Christiansburg out to that point and put in a traffic circle? It seems like it would be a whole lot more safe. It would get the people in and out of that development quicker. It would be an asset to the developer for selling those things. And that's, I mean.
Yeah, that would be something we would have to have VDOT evaluate um to ensure I with access management regulations, I don't know how far that has to be from another entrance to another development. Um, and how that would work with Rolling Hills and Dominion Drive. But um, I mean, it's something if the applicant.
Seems like it would help everything all the way around because it would slow traffic down.
It would slow traffic down.
It's just a, it's a thought.
After the one in Prices Fork, though, I'm not sure I want to be the planning director if you do that one.
What's wrong with the one in Prices Fork?
I keep telling people to be patient. They're going to love it one day.
I already love it.
Any other follow up questions? Okay, Bree, thank you. At this time, we will open up the public hearing. If you will come forward, give us your name and address. You'll have four minutes to speak. The applicant has fifteen minutes to speak. See, Mr. Simonas is coming forward. Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. Um, I appreciate the time tonight. Um, we feel this is an exciting project. Um, and I know traffic's the biggest thing and I am going to touch quite a bit on that. And I'm not going to repeat everything Bree went over tonight, but I did want to talk through a few few items here uh before we kind of get into the meat of the of the traffic portion of the discussion. Um, as as Bree mentioned, when we first, I left my little clicker. When we first started the project, um, as Bree mentioned, we had uh this front section completely was all was all multifamily and our access point was here across from Dominion. As we got through our planning commission work session and um site visit, we had heard from our neighbors right here and there were concerns about some of the intensity of the development right up against them. We pushed pause on our application for about thirty, forty five days, went back and and adjusted the layout um to what you see here today, which are the single family residential uh lots up against the tuck property right here. Um, an evergreen buffer and then that adjusted how the layout of the property, obviously with the multifamily fit in there um as well. One, one kind of gem that popped out of that that we all really liked and and after talking with staff uh was a positive as well is it allowed us to come up with a different unit type, which are the duplexes. And there aren't a lot of them, but what that does is that provides a different type of a unit at a different price point um than what we had in here originally with just the single family and the multifamily. Um, so we were excited to do that um and be able to provide that different type of a unit mix. Um, it also benefited both of the neighboring properties. Um, it provided a buffer up against the tuck property here to our west. And it also took away the main access road um up against our neighbors here to the east. So we felt this was was certainly a better project after after some discussion with our neighbors. Um, the single family homes will be three and four bedrooms. Um, I'm sorry, I should have done this when I started. So with us tonight, I've got Robert Fraylon, Brian McHale and Lynn Phillips from the Fraylon Companies that'll be here to answer any questions and might want to say something to you as well. So they will be three and four bedroom homes on a minimum ten thousand quarter acre lot. Um, those prices will be somewhere in the three hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand dollar range for sale. The apartment units will be a mix of the one and two bedroom units. So again, those aren't three and four bedroom units that are typically, you know, higher density. These are one, two bedroom units that really cater towards young professionals, young families, empty nesters. Um, those will rent uh between nine hundred and fifty and thirteen hundred dollars per unit uh based on the unit type. And the duplex units themselves are three bedroom homes, which they also have a master on the main option with those. Um, to Supervisor Demott's question, we have an option whether we rent or sell those and I've got prices for each. So if those are are sold, they would sell somewhere in the two seventy five to three hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. If they're rented, they could rent between eighteen hundred and two thousand dollars a month. Uh, we did talk about the HOA. So an HOA will be set up to maintain all the all the grounds, the stormwater management um areas, open space within development itself. There will be a separate property management company likely with the with the apartment complex itself. The HOA will be the homeowners, obviously, as they buy those lots um and and take that HOA forward past the developer stage. Um, but there will be a property management company that will maintain the parking lots, the pool, the clubhouse, and there will be an onsite leasing agent uh at the project every day. One of the other things we really appreciated about the property was it does have some significant environmental sensitive areas. So there's some creeks that run down through there. We do have wetlands as well. So we did try to protect those areas. We used open space and stormwater management areas in those as you drop down into the low parts of the property. That allowed us to kick our open space requirements or open space provided well above the required um amounts that are that are shown within the county requirements for the R three and the RM one zoning district. So while we're required to provide fifteen percent common space for the RM one, we're actually providing twenty five uh percent of dedicated green space. Several stormwater management locations, um I believe uh Chair Levins, you had asked about the multifamily vehicle parking. Um, so it's one point five um and two spaces per unit based on those bed bedroom types. So if it's a one bedroom, it's one point five spaces per unit and then two spaces per unit uh for a two bedroom. And we are meeting that based on the the general uh unit mix that we were provided from our clients as we were working through the layouts. Landscaping buffering will be will be proposed um based on the county requirements as well as the additional evergreen buffering we talked about up against our neighbor here to the west. As Bree mentioned, um, a full VDOT five twenty seven traffic impact analysis was was not required uh for this project because the traffic threshold, the traffic numbers didn't kick that threshold. Um, but we did go back in on our own and do this turn lane analysis based on the twenty twenty one VDOT counts and the projected trip generation from our development as it's shown here on the property. So we've heard over the last couple of days um at at our planning commission public hearing and then a couple, couple items today, the traffic is continuing to be a concern. Um, so I wanted to touch on a few of those things, um, a few of those items specifically. So again, we did look at it. So a turn lane is required and and as you all know, the turn lanes aren't just necessarily required based on the amount of turn movements for your project. A lot of it on a road like Pepper's Ferry, it's the opposing and the the traffic that's on there already. So for a left hand turn lane, we've got a very small amount of traffic, even in the PM peak, which is our highest. We have a small number of trips that are really making that left hand turn. The issue that kicks in the turn lane requirement is because you've got so many cars coming the opposite direction. And it's a two lane road, so you don't want to back people up back into rolling hills. Um, so the the turn lane requirements did pop in um with this development and the and the existing traffic on Pepper's Ferry Road. We did look at that as a sixty mile an hour road to try to go the very worst case scenario. Um, I had a conversation with Jesse Miller at VDOT late this afternoon, about five forty five or so to speak uh to a couple of the items that Supervisor Shepherd brought up and I'll address those here in just a minute. Um, but we did provide this information to VDOT. They did review it, you know, agreed with the turn lane analysis that we provided. As we looked through some of these other options today, we said, okay, well, do we have enough width in the right of way to Supervisor Fidzikowski's question? If this road ever widened to a four lane road? So as best we can tell, we haven't done all the survey across um across Pepper's Ferry here on the south side of Pepper's Ferry. But there appears to be, as as Bree mentioned, somewhere in that eighty five to a hundred feet of right of way through there. So if you just jump on Google Earth and go down the road closer to the mall and you can you can pull a distance basically from the back of sidewalk on one side of Pepper's Ferry to the back of the other and it's about ninety feet. So we feel pretty confident with the right of way we have in there that you could get a four lane road and the pedestrian. Um, I think that section of road also has a bike lane, but bike lanes and pedestrian improvements um on both sides of those roads. The good part about this property is that our client owns not only this piece, but when this piece was purchased, it also came with uh the property across uh one fourteen as well. So if additional right of way is needed in the future, we've got the ability to dedicate some additional. Um, you know, and that can be something that's worked out with VDOT and county staff during our site plan review process. We are required to meet site distance uh requirements. We looked at that um as well. Um, Jesse told me this afternoon, and I guess somebody mentioned it um that here within the last two weeks, I guess VDOT has approved an overall speed reduction on one fourteen from the corporate line down to Prices Fork. I believe that's correct. Um, he said I, to forty five, yes, sir, um, to forty five. Um, so we looked at site distance at a forty five mile an hour road, which is basically five hundred feet in each direction from our intersection. Um, actually moving the intersection in our road here to where we have it now provides better site distance than it did here in our initial um in our initial location. And again, that'll be verified. We'll have to do full survey and topo of that area to verify that. Uh, but it also gives us a little bit more room here at at sort of the crest of the hill, just over the crest of the hill to do some grading for our road to help get that elevation up a little bit more as well. So we did talk about the stea- speed limit reduction. We went back and looked at if the road did go to four lanes, would you be required to put turn lane in, turn lanes in? So obviously, if you've got two lanes of traffic going both ways, the traffic's moving. So if this were a four lane road, we would not be required, we would not hit the threshold to put a right hand turn lane in. We would just have to put a taper. And if for a left hand turn, it would really reduce the storage length down to fifty feet. So again, a four lane road would help that traffic movement through there. Um, and again, we do have that area. If the project goes through as we're showing right now, we're already getting one extra lane built with this project. So it will add that that middle lane um of turn lanes. And to to Chair Levins, your question concerning the actual turn lane and the tapers and the striping, we'll have to work that out with VDOT. We don't want to give any impression that you couldn't make a turn out of one of those intersections um as we get into the full engineering. Um, we've shown this, I believe, at a two hundred by two hundred, so a two hundred foot storage, two hundred foot taper. We may not need that much, um, you know, based on the final analysis, but that's something we would work out with VDOT. The last uh two more points and I'll and I'll move on. I know you all are busy tonight. Um, I did. I did, Supervisor Shepard did ask VDOT specifically about the, the possibility of a roundabout. So as you remember, when we worked on Price's Fork and, and the West Hill project, that was all, that was over double the amount of traffic that were, than what we're proposing on this one. And the issue with that was that kicked a threshold because of the amount of traffic coming out of that development, including Montgomery Farms when we made that connection. That put us into a position where it was going to require traffic signal. So if you require tra, if it's, traffic signals required, one of the things that VDOT likes you to look at is an alternative intersection, so that's why we looked at the roundabout there. With a limited amount of traffic we have coming in and out of this entrance, we don't kick into that threshold for, for an intersection control such as a signal. So when I asked Jesse, I said, can we, are you allowed to just stick a roundabout kind of in the middle of the road because you want to? Not because it's warranted for a signal, but because you want to? And he said, I've never been asked that question. So that's something we can certainly look at. I don't, I don't want to scratch it off the list of things that we, we don't want to do. That may be a better solution. We're just not sure right now from the conversation I had two and a half hours ago, whether that's, would even be allowable from VDOT's perspective. One of the reasons why you put that roundabout in is if you have a lot of left-turn traffic. So you have that movement coming around, or you have equal amounts, relatively equal amounts of traffic using each leg. So this would be a really small amount of traffic, even in that PM, I think we're thirty-five or forty vehicles in that peak PM hour, that would be making that left turn, left-hand turn. So it doesn't really, doesn't really evolve to the, to the point of needing a roundabout there from just a traffic flow standpoint, but it's something we can have some further discussions about. But again, we, we do have the right-of-way. Now we'll make one more, one more comment on that. Jesse did say, if a roundabout was proposed, it would be bigger than the one on Price's Fork. He said, just the amount of traffic on there, and that was about a one point four million dollar roundabout on Price's Fork Road. So there is a big, big infrastructure cost for roundabouts, especially on Price, on Pepper's Ferry Road. Last piece, and I'll, I promise I'll be quiet, is, as we always do with, with projects, we really spend a lot of time looking at our comprehensive plan, how we justify the project that we're putting in. As Bree mentioned, we do have a shortage of housing, especially in the county. So we're looking at three different housing types. It's in the urban expansion area. We've got water and sewer, you know, there for us. We know we've got some traffic concerns, but we've got several ways we can accommodate that to make it safe for the residents there. We feel if you've got the turn lanes, that does help slow people down. But we did spend a lot of time, as we always do, looking at the comprehensive plan. I'm happy to answer any questions the, the board has for me. I'm sorry, I made notes of each of your individual questions. Let me do that. Chair Bellevins, can I do that real quick, just touch through? Let's see, so we talked about Supervisor Demont's questions. Let's see, fire hydrants. So that would be based on the five hundred feet, as Bree mentioned, Supervisor King. So we would have those in there. Also, the, the apartment units themselves will be sprinkled, so you do have that extra fire protection in the multifamily units themselves. EMS on access, Bree touched on, and I guess Chair Bellevins, you had turn lanes, on-street parking. We are not proposing on-street parking. We had this conversation, I believe, the same, similar conversation with West Hill, on whether the county versus VDOT versus the developer could allow or not allow on-street parking. When we talked to VDOT about it, they said the, the road would be wide enough to allow it. If that's something the board would like to see us say in, in the cul-de-sacs, we won't allow it. We could post it. I think the issue that, that popped up on West Hill was who enforces that? It's not really a county enforcement if I, if I believe I'm, I'm right, and VDOT doesn't enforce that, so that would be, I'm not sure who would enforce it. But anyway, so we could, we could post signs around the cul-de-sacs themselves for no on-street parking. The apartment co, parking we talked about, and then the cost of the units themselves. So I think I've, I think I've touched on everything, but if I've missed one, I apologize, but I'll try to answer it if I can.
Do we have any follow-up questions? Supervisor Shepard?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. In my, in my years here on this earth, I've often questioned some of the ideas and thoughts that VDOT has and why they do, or what they do, or why they do not do what they do, and I've never gotten answers to that. And this might be another one of those. But I thought it was funny, you said it doesn't qualify for a signal light, so therefore probably that wouldn't, that wouldn't, wouldn't be one of those roundabouts either. And then you went on to say it would be bigger because there's more traffic.
More tra-
I, I know, and, and the more traffic is on one fourteen.
Correct.
But those people coming out of those housing developments have some kind of a realistic concern for their safety. And crossing that forty-five mile an hour lane, coming out of those, is surely going to be a problem. So, I mean, that's all I'm thinking.
Anyone else have? Supervisor Fitchukowski?
Um, yeah, what, what the heck is a point five parking spot? If you, if you had a one-bedroom apartment and it was a husband and wife in there, and they had two cars, does one have to ride a motorcycle?
One has to ride a motorcycle, yes, sir.
Okay.
No, the one point five, it's just to allow for that extra, that extra half-space, that extra guest parking, so when you average it out over the course of the, the one-bedroom units.
The other thing, it, it would really be nice if it had another entrance or exit because that's just, I don't know, to me, it looks like if something was to happen to block that road, you can't have access until it's cleared, and I know it's, that's kind of, you know, coming up with a hyper, just an imaginary type situation, but if anybody's ever been down one fourteen and hit that traffic light at Price's Fork, anywhere between five thirty and five forty-five, there's a half a mile of backed-up traffic. And that's, that's the thing about one fourteen, it is, it's such an artery to connect Christiansburg to Radford, and of course, same time go to Blacksburg. So it is, it's very busy, maybe not as busy as that fifteen minutes on Price's Fork in the morning and the fifteen minutes in the afternoon, but it gets a, gets a lot of traffic, so that's a, that's a concern. We don't want to make a mistake on that one.
Right. No, and I agree, and one thing we hadn't mentioned is when we reworked the layout here, certainly to your point Supervisor Fitchukowski, if, if an accident happened right here, you've got some traffic control you're certainly having to manage in that area. We do have, our, our trail system we've got here would allow, would be built big enough to allow an emergency access through this trail system into the apartments, so if something happened here, there would be another way to get in and out on that one. But as far as one fourteen right now, and it's, it's kind of that catch-22 as you're continually develop out into these urban expansion areas, you take it piece by piece, and sometimes you have to wait a little bit to make those connections. We did look, you know, if there were ways to connect over into our neighbors here to the, to the east, but we don't have any public right-of-way or access points over here. Once you drop down into the access road that goes back to the church, you've got some streams and wetlands that are right along that property line as well. So you've got some environmental impacts if you were able to put anything over there. There could be potentially a trail system that could go in that might be able to provide some emergency access, but as far as one fourteen, we're pretty limited on where we can make that connection.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs.
Going back to Supervisor Shepard's, you know, comments about a traffic circle and the comments that you don't have enough traffic to do a signal, dah dah dah. But if you look at one fourteen, we all know what's going to happen. It's going to be developed even further, and there're going to be further developments there. So I know that it's sort of not the way we think in Virginia, but the way I would like to think for public safety and for the future would be to really maybe look at what Supervisor Shepard, you know, suggested. I know Supervisor Bellevins and I actually talked about that earlier today, because there is a real concern about the traffic there. I love the plans for the development, and I like the amenities and the different dwellings that you have. I know it's not, you know, the prices are, regular prices, we're not doing housing that is lower cost for people that need lower cost, although I think the apartment idea is nice for people that, you know, professional young folks. But I'm still concerned about the traffic. Is there a way to investigate that idea?
The idea we're talking about is the roundabout?
Yeah.
After I talked with Mr. Miller today at VDOT, I told him we'd see how tonight went, and I may be back in touch with him to kind of see what our next steps are. We can certainly investigate it. He said that would be a conversation that we'd have to, he'd have to look through the regs on his end, and then probably have to be some conversations with Salem. So I, I don't disagree, Ms. Biggs, that, you know, one fourteen, you know, it took a long, long time for just the incorporated area of the town to widen. That was a big VDOT project that was revenue-sharing. I, I, I can't really speak to what VDOT's, I, I don't know if one fourteen, if that section is, is even in a six-year, ten-year, fifteen-year plan for VDOT. I'm not sure, maybe Mr. Meadows. So I know, you know, that, that is going to be a concern as development, especially in these urban expansion areas, continue, continue west. So the best we can do right now is we've got it planned for, we've got the right-of-way planned for, we can deal with the impacts that, that certainly our development would, would create here at this intersection. And nothing that we're doing here is going to prohibit anything in the future from happening. I just want to make that clear, too. So the location of our homes, the location of our apartments, the location of our right-of-way isn't going to impact, you know, VDOT being able to come, come in in five, ten, fifteen years, whatever, if they, if that's the timeline and widen it to, to four lanes. But we can certainly, if, if the supervisors see, see that as a, as a benefit to having some further discussion with VDOT on that roundabout issue, we can certainly, we can certainly do that over the next couple of weeks. Come back to you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Chair Bellevins, I have.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Supervisor Demont?
Mr. Simmons, you mentioned in your comments that there would be an onsite leasing agent. Would there be an onsite property manager and maintenance, or would it just be a sales agent onsite?
It would, they would be on, they wouldn't be twenty-four hours onsite, Mr. Demont.
Right, I just mean like a property management office with a, with a site manager.
I believe so. I can, I can let Mr. Fraylin answer that for sure.
And to, you finished your presentation with the question of who would enforce no on-stri, on-street parking. An onsite property manager would enforce that. I think that that would be kind of a natural match for that office if they're doing the apartment community and the HOA. So that would be my suggestion for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Moon?
Tell me why you can't flip Road B's right circle with the two town hos, homes on the other, if you turn that circle up and bring those two townhomes to the other side of that circle, you could get the circle within a hundred feet of that church access road. Is there a stream right there?
There's a stream that goes down this, goes down through this property line, right back in this area. Yes, ma'am.
Can you show, do that again, but show where that stream goes down?
Zoom in here, it'd be easier to see maybe with the topography. So you can see the, the contours right in this area. That stream kind of follows along the section right through here, and then gets to the main part of the creek, which is down a little further this way.
Is there a reason why you can't just put a little bridge over that stream?
You could. Now, we don't have access to that road. I mean, that's not a public road that we'd be tying into.
Mm-hmm. But for emergency purposes, you can have access off of that road, couldn't you?
Perhaps. I, I'm not sure of the legal means of egress to that church or through the, the mobile home park right here. I can't answer that a hundred percent from a legal standpoint, but, but generally speaking, yes, if there is a private road. I mean, I don't, I don't think the fire department or EMS is going to worry about his property they're driving over if there were, there were an issue.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Simmons, thank you for your presentation. Okay, I have a list of speakers. I will call your name. If you'll come up, you'll have four minutes for the public hearing. If you'll state your name and address, Mr. Christopher Tuck. Good evening.
Good evening, Christopher Tuck. I live at five thirty-nine Wisteria Drive. That is located in Montgomery County, but the mailing address is Radford. I tell you what, you leave the Board of Supervisors, you guys reduce this time to speak from five minutes to four, and then you do all this remodeling. I mean, if I'd known that was going to happen, maybe I would have stuck around another four years. All kidding aside, when I started, we, we always, when, every time I was up here and we had that moment of silence, I was always praying for two things. One, for guidance, and that I wouldn't say anything that would embarrass my family. And tonight, it's really important because I'm here speaking on behalf of my family. My father owns the land that's right adjoining to the property. And so when we heard about this development, we started looking at the original plans. And the original plans called for the multifamily to be right up against where my brother and his sister, my brother and my sister-in-law, his wife and their four kids, which range from six to fourteen live. And the way the topography was, the three-story apartments and their houses down below, so it would be like there would be a five-story building right beside them. So we reached out to the developer, and when I was on the board, I wanted to hear, did the developer at least try to address some of the adjoining landowners' concerns? And they did. Mr. Fraylin came up from Roanoke, and we walked the property, and he said that he would look at it and see what they could do about moving the multifamily away from where my, my brother and his wife and children live, and keep it consistent with single-family, because they have a single-family. They moved from inside the town of Christiansburg, they moved out there originally because they thought they were going to be out in the country a little bit, and the, the city has come out to them. And so one of the things that they've done i, is address our major concerns. My family has always believed in property rights. My father has always believed that owner, you own that land, you ought to be able to do with that land what you need to do. My votes when I was on Board of Supervisors, I remember voting against one project, and it was out in your district, when they wanted to put an abattoir, otherwise known as a slaughterhouse, right up against a, a, someone's subdivision. I did vote against that. But for the most part, when the developer was willing to work with the adjoining landowners, I tried to say yes. And they have done that for us. So we're at this point in time, as someone who adjoins it on behalf of my family, we are supportive of this project. We know you have concerns, and one of the things as a Board of Supervisors, you've got to work, and, and I know that we have, we're tried in the past to work on widening one fourteen. It's a major artery, and it's kind of the chicken and the egg situation. The more traffic you get, the more likelihood that you're, they're going to make it four-lane. But until that time, they keep it at two lanes. And so hopefully, while you're on the board, you may be able to influence VDOT to, to look at expanding and getting one fourteen four-lanes. Thank you for your service, and thank you for my four minutes.
Thank you, sir. Next I have Kathleen Ryland.
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Ryland. I live at nineteen thirty-eight Pepper's Ferry Road. My property is not directly adjacent to this development. However, it is directly adjacent to the piece of property that is the piece of property that is shown at the Road B connector. So if that piece of property is developed, it would bump right up to my piece of property. I am the one who sent the email earlier that your staff member talked about sending you today, and a lot of my questions and my concerns have been talked about, and you guys have, have brought up a lot of my questions that I have, and, and some of them were answered. One of the further things that I wanted to say tonight is, I understand the study was done, there's a, a plan for a turn lane, and that VDOT doesn't require the developer to do anything except what they've done. But what I want to say is, the developer doesn't live on that road. The developer doesn't see the number of accidents on that road. The developer doesn't sit on one fourteen for thirty-five minutes waiting to get in their driveway because there's an accident at Rolling Hills Drive. The developer also doesn't sit in their, in their driveway and try to get out- their driveway and try to get out to go to work every morning and sit for 30 minutes waiting for traffic to come or having to speed down Pepper's Ferry Road because the traffic, the speed limit is not enforced on that road. I have to turn into my driveway at 45 miles an hour or I will be rear-ended. So my concern is, not with the development, the development is beautiful. My concern is that number of increased cars with the dangerous road that is there now is not a good idea. Let him develop it with what he can develop it right now. Don't rezone it to allow the multifamily until something is done. If that second piece of property is developed and a second entrance is enter, is, is put where that piece of property is, that entrance will have to go halfway between the Tuck's property driveway and my driveway. I will never be able to get out of my driveway if that second entrance is allowed there. Thank you.
That's all that I have on the sign-up sheet, but if anyone would like to come forward to speak on this public matter, you have four minutes to address the board. Come forward.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Robert Frayland and I just want to say hello. I'm going to be very brief. I know you have another public hearing and the last thing you want to do is hear a lot out of, out of us, but I just want to say hello, say thank you for your time, tell you happy holidays, give you a very brief overview of us. We're, we're a regional community developer and the New River Valley is a huge part of our life in the last 22 years I've been, been doing this line of work. We have 42 employees, two of whom are here. We won't ask them to speak tonight, but Brian McKayhill, who's our chief operating officer, from whom I think you heard, and Wyn Phillips, started the, the business 22 years ago and, and boy, time goes about fast. I think you all may agree, agree with that. Steve did a great job. Bree, you did a great job. Thank you. And we are here for questions, but again, I'd like to be brief. I think everything that can be said that's, that's of value's probably been said. So just want to introduce myself. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no one come forward, I will close this public hearing. Next public hearing is requests by 9DG LLC for a special use permit to allow a travel center. We've got Ms. Bree back up again.
Thank you, Chair Blevins. They were joking in the office today and they said today was the Bree night. So as you stated, we have a request for a special use permit for a travel center on 2.6 acres that is currently zoned general business. This property is located off of Interstate 81, exit 109. A lot of people refer to it as the hospital exit. This is located on the opposite side of the interstate from the hospital. You can see it here designated with the star. This is an aerial view of the site. Some of you may remember it and be familiar with it. There used to be a convenience store there. It's at the intersection of Mud Pike and Tyler. This is the zoning map. We have had some questions about some other by right uses and what could be done. The property is zoned general business, as is a lot of the surrounding properties. So some examples of by right uses include building material sales, daycare center, equipment for machinery sales and service, hotel, medical care facilities, park and ride lots. I tried to pull out some that were about similar in the amount of traffic, but also possibly the type of traffic. There are lots of other by right uses in general business and I have asked Vicki to place the technical data sheet that we have for that within your board packet so you can see all of those uses. It does outline the ones allowed by right and then the ones allowed by special use permit. So as I stated, this property consists of 2.6 acres. It existed formally with four different uses. There was a convenience store with fuel cells here in the front. This was an auto repair sales service center. And this was a medical transport facility. Over the last few years, Richardson ambulance service. And then there is an existing dwelling at the rear of the property. These are some site images. This is standing on the far side of the property. You can see this building here. They did start demolition. They have stopped. They had started demolition and, and we advised they needed to get a demolition permit. So they've, they've ceased, ceased demolish, demolishing anything until we get through the process and get some permits issued. This is the existing convenience store in the distance. This is Route 177, also referred to as Tyler Road. And then looking the other direction, you can see the building here that they had begun to demolish and the neighboring residence that sits up on the hill. This is the intersection of Mud Pike and Tyler. So this is looking from Mud Pike towards that intersection. You can see the travel center across the street. And then this is a closer view of that intersection. Through the public hearings with the planning commission, we heard a lot about this particular area right here because of, as you can see, the drainage issues and the way that the road has fallen off there. This is the view looking down Mud Pike. You can see the dwelling in the distance and then this is a closer up view. So this is the original plan that was submitted to staff. This did go to the planning commission twice. And I debated on whether or not to put this in here, but I, I felt like it needed to tell the story so you would understand how we got to where we are. But this is the original plan that is marked up with our traffic consultant's comments. We did send this to a separate traffic consultant that's for the county to have it evaluated. And they had several concerns that the restaurant with the associated parking area and the dumpster location could impact site distance because as you can tell, you have to look back across this way for the truck entrance and, and for the vehicle entrance as well. And then there were concerns of the backup on Mud Pike. You can see a small right turn lane here. Existing drainage issues were also a concern, existing issues with the intersection and the median crossing, and then the number of the large truck spaces because that allows for additional large trucks to be on-site. And then the dumpster was fronting the 177 corridor. So those were several concerns that were talked about during that public hearing that was held on September 19th. The applicant did present a new concept plan at that, at that public hearing that had not been reviewed by staff. So the planning commission did have a motion to approve. However, that motion did fail. Following that, the applicant asked for some additional time to revise the concept plan, submit it back to staff for further review and reevaluation. So the request was referred back to the planning commission for a second public hearing. So this is the revised concept that is for your consideration today. They did shift the restaurant this way and remove the dumpster location to put it here. And then they shifted the parking spaces and eliminated some of the parking here. So that would allow for a better site distance. They also are going to improve and expand the roadway in this area so they could make a shift and expand the right turn lane for Mud Pike. They increased the size of this entrance, reduced the number of truck parking, which added up more green space to the property, and put the dumpster location here, along with a trash receptacle here for those, those people that use the long-term parking. There was a concern by a phone caller that said a lot of times when you have long-term parking, you have trash all over the area. So they did put in that trash receptacle to, to make that convenient for the folks using it. So as far as impacts, the Route 177 corridor overlay district does apply to this project and it does have some additional requirements as far as entrances. And I've outlined those here. It was also outlined in your packet. There is some grandfathering, so anything that was in existence prior to January of 95, which these entrances were, would be grandfathered. And so there is some leniency both with VDOT and within the county code. They are reducing the number of entrances, so therefore that does bring it into more conformity than it is now currently. So the current average daily traffic now according to VDOT is 11,000 vehicle trips per day on Tyler Road and 1,900 on Mud Pike. The TIA provided by the applicant has shown an increase of 37, 48 total daily trips by 2024. That's when full build-out is expected. The left turn level of service, and that's from Mud Pike onto Tyler, was decreased from a Level C to D, but all other movements appear to remain at an A, B, or C level. We should also note VDOT is acceptable to a level of D. It's much like a grading scale. So if you think of in school when your papers get graded, A is the best, F is the worst. So it, it does go in that level. Recommends extension of turn lanes and restriping of Mud Pike for the right turn lane. So that also come out from that traffic impact analysis submitted by the applicant. So the proposed development does extend turn lanes. On Tyler Road, there will be an extended taper with turn lane into the truck entrance and into the vehicle entrance. They have restripped the median, proposed to restripe the median. This was a complaint that come up from a couple of folks that they have requested VDOT to restripe that in the past and it had not been done. So the applicant said, well, we, we can take care of that. It helps people navigate in the intersection much better. A lot of times people will come up and they'll try to cut through here when that should be for the people coming through. So hopefully that will guide people through that intersection better should this be approved. They did extend the right turn lane on Mud Pike, which will allow for additional stacking. So it allows those cars to go around the tractor trailers to get in that right turn lane and hopefully will prevent stacking to, from building up so far. They do reduce the number of entrances. So there were multiple entrances on this property. I, I want to say at least five, maybe six. They are reducing it down to four. And then those entrance movements are also limited. So entrance number one here is a truck-only entrance and it's right in, right out. Entrance number two is for passenger vehicles only, right in, right out. So trucks will not be able to use entrance number two. Entrance number three is a full entrance for passenger vehicles. And then access number four is truck exit only. So that trucks will only be able to ax, to exit out of that entrance. They will not be able to enter the property. VDOT took no exception to the request. They did say a full site distance analysis will be required at site plan review to confirm that site distance could be met. There were some concerns still about the parking area. However, they said that there needs to be an evaluation, a full evaluation done because speed is a factor. The speed limit on Mud Pike, I believe, is 40. But because you're turning onto Mud Pike and going around that corner, it is anticipated that cars will not be traveling 40 miles per hour. So there, there are some adjustments, adjustments that would be allowed based on that speed. Staff did inquire about the potential for a traffic light at the intersection based on some questions we have received. And I did hear back from Mr. Miller. He stated the cost would be estimated at one to two million at minimum. However, he said that's not necessarily the problem for this intersection. The larger consideration is that a traffic signal has to have justification and there is simply not enough traffic at this intersection that would allow it to meet the requirements for a traffic signal. He gave me an example of another location that they had tried to pursue a traffic signal for and it had probably double the amount of traffic that this will have. So he said since it didn't meet requirements, he didn't fill this one with either. VDOT tends to take the approach they, they want to avoid signalized intersections, especially on these type of, of streets. And they want to keep traffic moving, not stall them. So that, that was his guidance in regards to the traffic light. Staff does still think that consideration needs to be given to the impact of the size and weight of trucks on road conditions. We know larger trucks tend to degrade the roads even more. The wait time for left-hand turns off of Mud Pike is still a concern and the potential backup of traffic on Mud Pike Road. The property does not lie in a FEMA-designated flood zone. Much of the site was previously developed. Will have to comply with all stormwater and erosion sediment control regulations. It is currently or was served by public water and sewer. The PSA director has confirmed that capacity exists for the proposed development. So the site was previously utilized for commercial purposes, so impacts to aesthetics, lighting, and noise may be minimal. However, the addition of the truck rest area does generate some additional impacts and mitigating those may be difficult. As you can see in the picture, this dwelling does sit much higher. The applicant has proposed a Type 3 buffer, which is what is required by the zoning ordinance. Additional landscaping has not been shown, but it will be required during site plan review stage. Trash receptacles have been provided near the truck, truck parking area. Consideration should be given to dark sky-friendly lighting. Topographical challenges does mean that attention should be paid to avoid that glare onto those adjoining properties. A full lighting plan will be required at site plan review. The applicants have indicated they will not be installing a high-rise sign at this location. They will be using a monument sign. So the property is located in an urban development area. It was formerly urban expansion and then when we transferred to UDAs in 2011, 2012, this was one of the areas that was designated. These areas are planned for compact mixed-use development at urban development densities and intensities. They are a focal point for our growth over the next 10 to 20 years. So the Planning and Land Use Section 1.9 here, the proposed development does provide multiple services. It is served by public utilities and consideration has been given to limit the movements of traffic and try to mitigate some of those traffic concerns. As far as economic development, it is a mixed-use development. It does have the restaurant on-site plus the convenience store with fuel cells and then the long-term truck parking. As far as transportation, these are three items from transportation that staff pulled out for consideration. The number of entrances to the site will be reduced from the existing number. So this does help bring access management into closer conformity. Truck parking will help mitigate the truck parking that we are seeing along Interstate 81, especially at the rest areas. And the entrances will be limited based on the type of vehicle. However, the majority of access will be from Tyler Road for those entering the sites. While a convenience store existed previously, the proposal does increase the intensity of use and associated traffic. The number of fuel pumps has increased from four to a minimum of 12. The addition or introduction of larger trucks to the site causes some concerns and the addition of a high turnover restaurant adds additional traffic. 14 truck spaces for long-term parking has been proposed. That is reduced from the former 23 that was proposed. The existing intersection is not ideal. Staff does recognize that there are existing issues there with drainage issues, alignment, pavement, pavement markings. Several things that the planning commission discussed was the amount of tractor trailers already using the Mud Pike intersection. Most of those come from term and lumber. They've estimated approximately 100 per day Monday through Friday is what exits their site and the majority of them comes off of Mud Pike onto Tyler. The applicant has attempted to mitigate the issues that are caused by their development once they submitted their redevelopment plan. They shifted the proposed restaurant so the relocation will ensure that the building will not further impede site distance and for the large trucks as they exit. The other consideration for the large trucks is they sit higher. So the way they look at site distance is a little bit different. They will conduct a speed study and obtain the required site distance. Staff has stated that if a recommendation of approval is followed through on and the, the request is approved, that we would have that as a condition, that they meet site distance without any exceptions. Intersection improvements. The right turn lane is extended for Mud Pike. They've improved the turn radius and drainage for Mud Pike and they have added the, the median striping. The addition of the green space on the portion of the property previously designated for truck parking and they've reduced the number of those, those proposed spaces. That help mitigates the amount of traffic. So instead of 23 parked on-site and then you have the issue of trying to get out and navigate around the fuel pumps, that has all been mitigated through reducing those parking spaces. The relocation of the convenience store dumpster away from the 177 corridor and then adding those receptacles, that has done multiple things. It's improved the aesthetics along the 177 corridor, but it's, it's also added a convenience for the truckers using those long-term parking. So staff does recognize the need for travel centers along the 181 corridor. We hear a lot about how there are issues with tractor trailers parking along 81. I can attest to passing by the rest areas every morning and you see trucks lined up and down the interstate. I can attest to passing by the rest areas every morning, and you see trucks lined up and down the interstate. Some of them are getting tickets from state troopers, but most of them are parked along those ramps, even going off and on the interstates. So this proposed use could alleviate some of those issues. It does put a small dent into it. The planning commission actually requested some data because they wanted to try to see realistically how many trucks would go through the site. So I did call and spoke to some general managers of some nearby travel centers. One was off the Clayter Lake Exit one oh one. It is fifty parking spaces. It is much larger than this one, and they were saying they see two to three hundred trucks per day. The Dublin Exit ninety-nine, they only have fifteen parking spaces, and they see about a hundred to a hundred and fifty trucks per day. And that is the liberty that is between Fats and McDonald's, if you're familiar with the Dublin Exit. The Aronto Exit one twenty-eight, they also have a much larger site. They have fifty parking spaces, and they are seeing about three hundred trucks per day average. He said some days it can go up to four hundred, but normally it's about three. So the concern does remain for potential traffic backup. The applicant has made an effort to reduce and mitigate those impacts. The planning commission did recommend approval of the revised plan with the following conditions, and I am going to go through these one by one. The conceptual layout, the site shall be developed in conformance with the concept plan dated October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, and prepared by Forsight Design Services. All entrances shall be approved by VDOT and shall meet VDOT requirements, including site distance requirements per section ten thirty-nine of the Montgomery County Code. In addition, shall be limited as follows. The Tyler Road access shall be limited to right-in, right-out movements only. Access number one shall be limited to truck traffic only, and access number two shall be limited to passenger-vehicle traffic only. Mud Pike access number four shall be limited to trucks exiting the site. No entrance shall be permitted. And in addition to the required type-three buffers shown on the concept plan, an opaque fence should be installed between the truck parking area and the adjoining properties. Exterior lighting shall be designed to prevent glare on to adjacent properties or roadways and shall comply with dark-sky-friendly standards. All trucks parked in the long-term parking area shall be in operable condition. The proposed dumpster enclosure shall be shielded from view along the one seventy-seven corridor, and shall be constructed according to the dumpster pad screening detail submitted as part of the revised application. That vote was a five-to-two vote with Mr. Miller and Ms. Simkins opposed. Mr. Foster was absent that evening. Adjoining property owners have been notified. Public hearing signs have been placed at the property. The legal ads have ran in the run-up times. Three citizens spoke at the planning commission public hearing. One expressed support, and two did express concerns with traffic on Mud Pike and Tyler. There may be additional people here to speak. Mr. Neal with Forsight Design Services is here. He does have a presentation. He's also available for any questions that staff cannot answer. And with that, I will take any questions you have for me.
Thank you, Bree. We'll start off with Supervisor Shepard.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Supervisor Demonts.
I don't have any questions at this time either. Thank you.
Supervisor Fidzikowski.
I don't have a question as much as I have a comment. You brought up the several travel centers up and down eighty-one. You mentioned the one at the one twenty-eight has fifty parking spots?
That's what they told me. Yes.
Go by there some morning. It's not just fifty. They're all over Route six oh three. And I could see this happening at this small travel center because those fourteen spots will fill up probably by nine o'clock. Then they'll start parking in the middle of the lot. Then they'll start parking in the turn lane and along the shoulder. I don't know how you would control that, but that's my comment.
Supervisor King.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
My concern with it is, when they're going to come off of Mud Pike, try to take that left. I go through there twice a day, twice a day. I have come down through there and had to stop in the middle of the road because I guess the tractor-trailer got tired of waiting their turn to go left. So when they got an opening, they went across one lane, blocked it up, waiting on people going towards the interstate away from Rafford so they could pull out. Concern of mine is the traffic.
Yes, and that was mentioned in the public hearing with the planning commission, that the median was not wide enough to accommodate the full tractor-trailer. I mean, most medians are not wide enough to accommodate full tractor-trailers, but yes, this is one situation.
And we had the person that told you, and you know yourself, we've been trying to get VDOT to put lines in that medium to split it, but...
Yes.
And also what Steve said, you know, trucks is going to be parking beside the road. They're going to fill up the parking holes. And I understand where they're coming from. They want to open this back up. I understand that. Also, we have to take into consideration the decisions that live there. Have they, did they get a demolition permit yet?
The demolition permits have not been obtained yet. Correct.
Okay. You been up there lately?
I have not.
Might want to take a ride tomorrow? That's all.
Supervisor Bone.
What did they do for the drainage on that corner?
I am not sure how they would do it. I know they'll have to do some paving, so I don't know if they'll put in a pipe. Mr. Neal can probably speak to that. But when, if they do widen it, they will have to put something in there.
And can they give up a little bit more land to extend that right turn off of Mud Pike?
Is that... I'm not sure if they could based on topography. I think if additional land was necessary for that, it would have to come from across the street, just based on topography.
And then the two hatched mark by the restaurant, right at the corner. Yeah, that plus right next to the restaurant.
That one is probably handicap.
Okay.
These four spaces here are electric charging stations for electric vehicles.
And then the bigger rectangle at the corner, is there a reason why that's not green space?
I am not sure. You would have to ask Mr. Neal.
And then as part of the planning commission comments, questions, the business owner or the presentation included other travel centers that the owners had.
Correct.
And I'm curious how they actually manage all this stuff, overnight stuff, because I would imagine that they experience that at those other locations, so I'd like that further explanation.
And Mr. Patel is here as well, so I'm sure he can speak to some of that.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs.
I know it's needed, but I share the concern about the traffic and also thinking about the future, about development out there, and how, you know, that might impact cars. Like as that's developed and, you know, having the tractor-trailers go in and out, it could be a situation again. So I don't know what can be done about that, but that's my concern is the traffic at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Bree, it seems like the theme for tonight is traffic concerns.
It is the theme, yes.
And even though this, I agree that it is needed because if anyone's ever traveled Interstate eighty-one, you know, the tractor rest areas are completely full, and the tractor-trailers stop there anyway. I see Supervisor Fidzikowski voiced my same concern. What stops from the fourteen spots other tractor-trailers stopping? And again, the question is, who's going to enforce that? Obviously, if it's on the side of the road that's illegally parked, our deputies can enforce it. But on the private parking lot there, who's going to enforce all this tractor-trailer? And now you went from four pumps to twelve pumps. That's more coming in. Who's going to enforce that you're going to use the entrance that's only passenger vehicles? I mean, somebody's going to make a mistake, obviously, but, you know, who's going to enforce that this is the right way they're going to enter, exit? It's going to block visibility. And of course, the medium, of course, the correct way would be opposite, you know. Tractor-trailers are typically sixty-five feet long, and so even when he comes to that medium, he's going to block both lanes because he doesn't have the radius to turn into the lane closest to him. And across the street, you already have a business that'll be coming out making that when they make the right into that left turn. Not even to mention that even though it's crazy that VDOT, that eleven thousand traffic is used on that daily. Is that correct? Is that what you said, Tyler Road?
Tyler Road, eleven thousand ADT.
So that is a lot of traffic there. But yes, those would be my concerns, and I'm assuming the two that voted against it, Mr. Miller and Ms. Simkins, were because of the traffic.
It was because of traffic concerns, yes, both of those. And I do want to clarify, so the twelve pumps are here for the passenger. There are, there are four fuel pumps here. However, I have learned something, and that's when the trucks go through, they actually fill up from both sides. So you can only have two trucks filling up at one time, and it takes them about fifteen to twenty minutes per truck is what I have been told from Mr. Patel. So I did learn that recently. So I will pass that along. I'm sure he will speak to it as well.
Okay, and then I said that, that, okay, that, thank you for that clarification. It's only four for the tractor-trailers.
Right.
And there's the one...
Twelve for the passenger vehicles.
Thank you for that clarification because I thought, whoa, that's a lot. And then the entry, exit four is only for an exit.
Only for truck exits. So they would come in here, some of them might back up and take a rest, and then before they leave, they'll fill up and then come out here. They do have the option, if they back in here and just rest, I mean, they do have an option of taking a right out of this entrance, but then that would require them to go down and do a U-turn somewhere or to turn on to the road at Comfort Inn and come around that way.
Yep, that's, yeah, that's not going to be good. Okay, and how long is the long-term parking? What is the limitation?
We would say, we would say one day. I mean, that's what staff would consider it. I mean, we're not going to be out there saying, you've been here for forty-two hours because we just don't have the staff to do that. That's the reason for the operable condition. So we don't want someone to park their truck there and it stay there for days because it's broke or it's not operable, or they've just abandoned it. So that's, that's the reason for that condition. But long-term is normally greater than eight hours. I don't think we would recommend that they be there much longer than a day.
So that's not, that's a recommendation, no way to enforce it. So if somebody does want to park there for three nights...
As long as it's operable, there's probably not anything we could do about it.
Okay, all right. Any other follow-up questions, comments? Ms. Bree, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to take about a five-minute break, Mr. Neal, and then we will start our public hearing. Thank you. Well, I was like, I looked out for you, and I was like, I thought you were trying to save me.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I appreciate your time this evening. I think we've got our presentation here. Move on. Here tonight, Representative Jay Patel with nine DG. Jay unfortunately is out of town, but Steve Drake is here, as well as part of the other ownership group. Steve will be happy to answer some questions. He has some tax revenue things to present as well. Myself, obviously, foresight design, I'm an engineer. And then Carl Holgren with Grove Slade is our track, traffic engineer, and he is here to answer any specific questions you might have. I'm gonna wanna hit on a few things. First, this is kinda a little bit of the agenda, the location, the zoning, the existing land use, the future land use and the urban development area designations that y'all have in place, the one-seventy-seven corridor plans, the site distance, the traffic impact analysis, the plan improvements, the tax revenue, which Steve will talk about, and then the quality ownership that we have. And Steve can talk about that a little bit as well. So just to make sure we're all know where we're talking about, and I think we all do, we're just across from the Radford Travel Center, which is the travel center right here on the other side of the intersection, and we're on Mud Pike, right in this area here. I think it's showing up there, yeah. So our zoning, as Bree mentioned, is general business. And one thing that is really critical to point out, and I think all of you all were on this board at that time, that the zoning ordinance was revised in the year 2020 to allow travel centers with an SUP in the general business district. So that's one of the things you all set aside, is like, hey, we wanna put travel centers with an SUP in the general business district. That's the only place we want 'em. And then even more so, you said, within one-quarter mile of an interstate or a major arterial. And that puts an extremely limited availability for travel centers to locate within Montgomery County. With Christiansburg having, having the one-fourteen, one-eighteen exits, you've got one-oh-nine, potentially some of one-oh-five, and then one-twenty-eight. So just to show you, one of the things here, this is the VDOT functional classifications. As we talked about that, interstate or major arterial. And so we're really only talking about, here's the interstate here in blue going this way. And so we're talking about, like I said, the one-oh-five interchange, you maybe have something, which is straight up the hill over there where it's at. And then our one-oh-nine exit, and then one-twenty-eight's off the page there. So to give you an idea of where that quarter-mile distance is, here's our intersection where we're talking about, so you could potentially put something over towards the hospital area. And we did this at a quarter-mile from where the interchange, where the exit ramps end. The Radford Travel Center, as you can see, is sitting right there in that area, and then we're proposing to locate right here. And then here's the general business, areas that are zoned general business up at exit one-twenty-eight as well, just to kinda give you an idea of where there is. Exit one-twenty-eight, the Ironto Lancer is sitting right here. So our existing land use at twenty-five-hundred Tyler Road, we have an existing convenience store that had shut down a little while ago, and then we have the ambulance place and auto repair shop. And you can see the aerial from, from previous, there was quite a few actual trucks, box trucks and larger trucks parked there back then when this picture was taken. And you can see a logging tractor trailer coming down Mud Pike, heading towards, head towards the lumber mill down there as well. You can see that. So here's a few pictures of the frontage along Tyler Road, just to give you a flavor of what was there in the existing and in previous conditions of the site. And this is the rear of the old convenience store, and some of the, the improvements and the dumpster sitting there. So one thing that we think is, is critically important is that the future land use, we are located within an urban development area that the county designated for future growth. And it talked about the developed commercial area, the vacant, underutilized area, and talking about all these areas as being available for development and/or redevelopment. That's one of the things that the county identified. It's where you have, have determined and decided that you want the growth and the development to take place. And so one of the things that I wanted to point out, and this is from your comprehensive plan, ten years, it's a hundred and nine thousand square feet was predicted, or proposed for commercial square footage, and in twenty years, wanted to be at two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand square feet. So that's a lot of growth in those urban development areas, and that's kind of where you were proposing to direct that growth. So showing our site here, getting into the details of, of what we're talking about, as we noted, entrance one would be the truck entrances coming off of the interstate. And we've also worked with both VDOT. So, so one of the things I'll, I'll point out really quickly, we had a traffic engineering consultant, Grove Slade, Carl's here, went through a full-blown traffic counts, traffic impact analysis, a full-blown traffic impact analysis, submitted that to VDOT. They have reviewed and approved that traffic impact analysis. The county's on-call traffic consultant also reviewed that and, and took no exceptions. They do, they did have questions about site distance, and we've answered those. So our first entrance here is a truck entrance, and then, but we did extend a right turn lane all the way up here along and outside the travelway for cars coming into this fuel pump island here. And one thing to point out, I wanna make sure, we have six pump islands, which means twelve spaces. So there's not twelve pump islands, I just wanted to clarify that. And then over here, we have three pump islands with two spaces, one in, in between each of those for the trucks to fuel on either side of there. And we did reduce the number of truck parking spaces, there's overnight truck parking spaces to fourteen. One of the questions was, who's gonna enforce truck parking? Mr. Fidzikowski, you were concerned about people parking here. The, the management staff and the store manager is gonna be operating twenty-four-seven, they are not going to let trucks park out here in the middle of this area overnight. They will enforce that and, and have them move on. And I think, I guess, I don't know, and I haven't heard of a large truck parking problem out here right now along the Tyler Road. We do have a travel center operating there right now, the Radford Travel Center, and I don't, I don't think I've heard anything major about concerns there. And I do think the local Sheriff's Department folks would enforce if there's, or state police would enforce if there's people parking illegally along the side of the road. And we'd certainly support that. And entrance number two here on Tyler is a, a vehicular, passenger vehicle entrance and exit, so they could enter here, they could also exit here and take out and go towards Radford. Entrance four at the top of the page here is a truck exit only, coming out onto Mud Pike Road. And then exit, entrance three is a passenger vehicle entrance and exit here. We did note in working with the county's on-call traffic consultant, as well as our traffic consultant, VDOT, and measured the site distances, and this is the reason we've done some of these things, such as put in some of that hatched striping right there to make sure that we have the site distance measuring back here to this intersection. We did do a, a speed study for cars coming off of Tyler onto Mud Pike. The speed was substantially lower than the posted speed limit, and so we, that's what we do with our measuring of our site distance. I think, Ms. Moon, were you asking about this up here in the upper right-hand corner?
No.
No, okay.
Talking about the hatching at the corner.
Oh, right here?
I don't see your cursor. Where the heck is your cursor?
Near, uh, circle three.
Next to Mud Pike Road.
Yeah, that was for the site distance, to make sure that there's no parking there.
No, I, I was just asking why it wasn't green versus hatched.
Oh, yes, we could certainly make that green. Yeah, absolutely. There would not be a problem. And then this hatch is just for the corner of the building there, going around the side. And then this was, we could certainly even make this green right here as well if we needed to, just for the travel lane coming through here for cars. So the other thing to keep in mind is the one-seventy-seven corridor area plan, your gateway plan to Montgomery County. It was identified in that area plan as an important growth area, and then expect, exit one-oh-nine was expecting substantial commercial development. They wanted to consolidate entrances. We had six entrances on this site existing, we've reduced them down to four, and improve aesthetics. I think we hopefully can all agree that we're doing that tremendously well, adding additional jobs and tax revenue from Interstate eighty-one travelers. The best money that the county can generate is probably from people that aren't in the county, would be ideal. And the use is expected via the SUP process for the general business district. So one of the things is to try to mitigate some, some of the potential issues, and we think we've done that pretty well in reducing the number of overnight parking spaces. I'll show you here, just to give you an idea. We did do the speed study on October eighteenth, and the eighty-fifth percentile speed, which is what you use to measure the required site distance, was eighteen miles an hour. The average speed was only thirteen and a half. So required site distance of a hundred and seventy-two feet, which is what you see here. For the traffic impact analysis, we used actual traffic counts. I think one of the things to keep in mind, and I know there's certainly a lot of trucks that park on some of these other, but that was a self-reporting. Bree was, was doing a, trying to, to get a handle on some of these other truck facilities, and so there's somebody there that's just saying, I think we had a hundred and fifty trucks or two hundred trucks. We did specific actual counts and utilized the Institute for Transportation Engineers studies and things like that to create the number of trips that we're proposing. We are doing a full stormwater management to today's standards, and we do have VDOT's support of all the proposed improvements we've proposed. So to dive in just a little bit more, we, I said we've added the restaurant back, you all never saw it when we'd taken the restaurant out. We, we heard that there was definitely more support for having the restaurant there, so we've added that back. We did create a right turn lane onto Tyler from Mud Pike. It's a little bit more, I said approximately a hundred and feet, it's about a hundred and fifteen feet. Provided additional pavement in this area, and we're just, this is an example, we certainly can pull this pavement back here some more to create, I think, Ms. Blavins, you had a concern about if a truck coming here and turning this way, we can add quite a bit of pavement in this area to allow for that, that truck to make that turn. Cuz the right-of-way is actually, if you can see this black line here, that's the right-of-way line. So there's substantial right-of-way there to allow for that. We've also added a double-yellow line and stop bars to the crossover to improve the traffic flow and reduce accidents. I think, Mr. King, you mentioned that. We're proposing that we will do that. I think you'd said y'all have asked VDOT to do that. Not, not sure why they haven't. And we've reduced the number of truck parking stalls, we've added green space, and we've shifted the dumpster. There was a concern about some, some trash and people overnight, overnight trucks, we're trying to make it as convenient as possible, and that's one of the things that our staff at the store will, will routinely check those areas out, make sure that they are adhering and using the, the trash receptacles in the dumpster. And we provided some additional detail on the landscape buffer. So at this time, I think I'm gonna invite Steve Drake up, if I can, to talk a little bit about the ownership group, the store doing, and then some of the tax revenue.
I'm Steve Drake. I live at ten-sixty-eight Gander Lane in Bedford, Virginia. Hello, Mr. Meadows. Couple of things, a lot of numbers being thrown around today. One of the biggest one that hasn't been heard by anybody up here is seven million dollars. That's how much this group is going to invest in that. That's how much you're gonna increase your tax base by. Add to that the personal property taxes, cigarette taxes, meal taxes, sales taxes. There's a lot of money that's being brought to the table here. We know it's a business, and we're in the business to make money. But to make money, you gotta spend money. And so they're ready to spend that money. Mr. Neal has addressed a lot of the concerns you had about traffic, about the way it's set up. But I think the biggest thing to think of is, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the low end per year of taxes brought to the county. And that's just a start. It does not include anything, you mentioned about the restaurant in there, it is not a drive-through restaurant, it is not a fast-food restaurant. They're looking at one of the sit-down small restaurants to get people in here. I know Mr. Meadows knows that for every dollar spent on tourism, seven dollars is returned. I talked to Mr. Patel last night, he is ready to put up a kiosk or a little space or anything and work with the Economic Development Department to put some brochures out there and get people in. You're gonna pull in, you're gonna get gas, you don't want them to pull straight on in the highway. You want them to come in and enjoy the county, enjoy the town, see what's going on in the New River Valley. And so they're more than willing to do that. So we are also improving the environment here, because there's a lot of those old gas tanks in there, they're more than thirty years old. All of that's gonna be pulled up, and all new tanks are gonna be put in. If you saw some of the pictures that Mr. Neal put up about the old facilities, there was cars laying all around, there was dilapidated buildings, it's a big improvement on what's going on there. And if your goal is to make that a focal point or an entrance to your county, as long as it looks nice, that's really what you want. You want a shining star at the beginning of the travel. So we are ready to do that. Ten to fifteen employees to start off with, that's some more employment into the county, that's some more income into the county. So any other questions you have? I'm ready.
Happy to answer any questions y'all have.
Supervisors, do we have any questions for Mr. Neal and Supervisor Fidzikowski?
I heard you say, John, something about you did an actual traffic count?
Yes, sir.
Did you say what that was? Maybe I missed it.
So we did, when we do a traffic impact analysis, we actually take counts on both Mud Pike and Tyler and at that intersection of the actual count of the peak hours over the course of a couple of days to inform what's actually happening at the intersection today. Then you add on a growth factor, and you add on the trips that we're doing. A lot of, a lot of things that happen, and people, people may not quite realize this, is that when you open a new business like this, some of the traffic that is generated is actually the cars that are passing by already. And so you capture quite a bit of the pass-through traffic that was already on the road to begin with. So it's not necessarily that you're generating all this extra traffic on a road.
Did you get, did you, did you get numbers?
Yes, sir.
What, 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 what'd you come up with? What is the traffic count?
Oh, I'll defer to Carl here, if that's all right, as our traffic engineer.
Okay.
Yes, good evening. Carl Holgren with Grove Slade. We did the traffic study for the project. So I'm, I'm not sure which numbers you're specifically asking for, but we, we counted at the intersection of Tyler Road and Mud Pike, we did a, a traffic count out there from seven to nine AM and from four to six PM, which are the standard peak hours that we, that VDOT requires us to count. And then within that two-hour window, we identified the worst sixty minutes, or the highest level of traffic during sixty minutes, and that's what we base our analysis on. That's what we call the peak hour.
Okay.
So on, on a daily basis, there's roughly eleven thousand cars per day on Tyler, that's the total of both directions, and approximately nineteen hundred cars per day on Mud Pike.
Okay. Yeah, we had those numbers. I, I didn't know that you guys took those numbers down. Okay, thank you.
And then just to emphasize what John is, was just talking about with the pass-by traffic, you know, we, we use the ITE Trip Generation Manual to estimate- to estimate how many trips will come in and out of the, the proposed convenience store. And 76% of those trips are pass-by trips, meaning they're already out there on Tyler and Mud Pike today. And they, they would pull in, you know, and fuel up or stop at the store if there was one there today. So, like John said, it's, it's not gonna generate a whole lot of new traffic at the intersection. It's gonna take advantage of the, the customers that are already driving by the site today, for the most part.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I could see your point on the, the cars driving by, but, but you do have trucks coming in.
Right. I, I agree. The, the truck traffic will generally be drawn off 81.
Okay.
As opposed to Tyler, but the passenger vehicles, some from 81, but some will be passed by as well, both directions.
There would be, probably be quite a few logging trucks that will fuel up here as well. So that, that's a capture type of situation.
But they'd have to go on to Tyler to come into, there's no way that they could do that. They could do it on their way to the...
Well, it's there, on the way to, yes, 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 absolutely.
Mr. Neal, just for clarification, I, you mentioned several times, um, overnight parking, but then I thought, just for clarification, you said there would be no, no overnight parking?
If I did, I misspoke. Uh, there would definitely be overnight parking.
There, okay, there will be overnight parking, okay.
There will not be any overnight parking other than the 14 spaces that are shown on here.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to clarify.
Thank you. And then on the parking for the restaurant, if it's gonna be a sit-down kinda style restaurant, um, and you said several of those parking spaces are for electron, uh, uh, charging stations. How many pa, parking spaces does that really leave?
Well, so, so those are, those are electric vehicle available charging station locations. They're not necessarily completely reserved for electric vehicles. Um, but we do have, uh,
Okay.
10, um, 12 spaces there, and then we have all the spaces here in front of the, front of the store as well.
Okay.
But we have, uh, 12 spaces shown right now, of the, in addition to the four electric spots.
Very good. Any other questions? Supervisor Demonts, do you have any questions?
I don't, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Neal. We appreciate your presentation. I will open up the public hearing now. Um, I have, I think Andy Smith is next. You'll have four minutes to address the board.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm Andy Smith. I live at 2910 Mud Pike. My concern is mostly traffic and creating an unsafe intersection. Mr. Neal addressed adding pavement to the property and increasing the right turn lane coming from Mud Pike. In order to get to that right turn lane, you'll have to wait behind the trucks that are lined up on Mud Pike. Only then will you be allowed to bypass the single tractor trailer waiting to turn left. You can't see around that tractor trailer. The presentation downgraded the intersection according to VDOT standards from a grade C to a grade D. I am all for and support improvements in business and growth within the community. I do not support a downgrade in traffic safety. I exit that road twice a day. My 19-year-old daughter exits that road. My 14-year-old daughter will exit that road. I do not believe that's a safe improvement to the situation. In regards to the entrance for the trucks coming from Tyler, the first five back-in spots, if being utilized, will block oncoming tractor-trailer traffic during the back-in phase or the pull-out phase, therefore creating a backlog onto Tyler Road from the tractor-trailer trying to enter the property. Again, I fully support the increase, the improvements, but I don't think the tractor-trailer aspect of this property is feasible. Tractor trailers, towed campers, logging trucks, and delivery vehicles, when entering Mud Pike from Tyler, take up both lanes of the current Mud Pike intersection. Adding the increased space will help, but I just don't think it's enough. The single lane entering Mud Pike has to be used in a wide, um, entrance pattern for those tandem vehicles. There's also, Mud Pike is also designated as a bike, um, trail in some, in some instance. I don't know the exact, um, terminology for it, but there are bikes and there are bike trails and, um, uh, rides that happen on Mud Pike. And so now we're introducing a whole new set of obstacles for those bicyclists where there's actually no bike lane to begin with. In comparing the truck spaces at the other, uh, travel centers nearby, we've, we've discussed 50 spaces at one spot, 15 spaces at another, and 50 spaces at another with 100 to 300 trucks per day entering and exiting. My question is, are those on 2.6 acres of property? With 2/3 of the property designated for passenger vehicles? It looks like we just have a very small window.
Mr. Smith, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
That completes the list. If any, any other citizen would like to come forward to address this public hearing, you'll have four minutes to address the board. If you'll state your name and address.
Uh, my name is Beth Umberger. I live at, uh, 915 College Street, which extends into Mud Pike. Um, the 76 bike route, you know, that concerns me. No, no mention of that. Uh, the 76 bike route goes down Mud Pike. It goes down College Street, then it goes down Mud Pike. Uh, so, and there are a lot of people that use that. Different times of the year, there's more traffic one way than the other. Um, so I'm concerned about there's no bike lanes at all. And, uh, I'm guessing that people would stop, the bikers would stop there. It'd be nice to have some bike racks, but that's not required. But anyway, but the bike lanes really do concern me, cause it doesn't seem like there's even any mention of that. Cause that's, that's, the 76 bike route goes from, um, Williamsburg, Virginia, all the way out to the California coast. And it's, it's used a lot by bikers. I used, we used to keep, house them at our house when they came through, so it's concerning.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anyone else like to speak on this public hearing? Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing. Next up, public address. I have a sign-up sheet. I will call the name on the public, uh, sign-up sheet, and then after that, any citizen that would like to address the board. You'll have four minutes to do so, whether speaking as an individual or representative. All comments must be directed to the chair and other supervisors from the front. Uh, please begin by stating your name and address. Debate between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers may leave any written statements or comments to the supervisors with the board clerk. Speakers would be judged out of order should they, the speaker engage in any personal attacks, use profanity or abusive language, or debate with the audience and not address the supervisors. I have Mr. Maven Ogle.
Good evening. How y'all doing tonight? Uh, my name's Maven Ogle, and I live on Rhine Road in Montgomery County. I would like to address the board supervisors tonight on the subject of the 2023 real estate reassessment that I just received. I was shocked when I saw that my assessment had increased by 34%. I thought it was a mistake, until I asked my son, who lives beside of me, and his increased by 43%. The new assessment will increase my property value by $60,000 from last year. At the current tax rate of 89 cents per 100, that's an increase of $533 per year that I will have to pay on top of what I'm already paying. I have not made any improvements to my property in the last five years, except I did put two rocks in my yard to try to keep the traffic from running through my house. Uh, I'm a senior citizen now, and I live on a fixed income. $533 more a year is hard to come by. Have you ever heard of the social security benefits increasing by 34%? You might say that I might benefit from my property increasing, but I've got to have a place to live. And it hurts when your tax rate increases like that. Just because my property has a Rhine Road ad, address, it doesn't mean that it's more valuable. My property is owned agriculture. I have three large farms that surround my property. Some days I have cows walking through my yard. I've tried hard through the years to keep my property looking nice. If something don't change to help assist with the burden of this extra tax load, then I'm afraid people's gonna be forced to start deteriorating their property so that it will lower their property values so they can afford to survive. Or either they gonna have to move out of Montgomery County. I've lived this location for the past 37 years. My property lies at one very dangerous intersection. There's three roads that come together and meet at my house. Rhine Road, Dairy Road, and Meta Creek Road. How would y'all like to lay there at night, not knowing if a vehicle is gonna come through your bedroom or not? But yet you're saying my property value is, is increasing like this. I'm asking you, as the board supervisors, to please look into this. Look what y'all are imposing on the senior citizens of our community, and please adjust it so it'll be affordable for all of Montgomery County to still live and work here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That completes the names on the sign-up sheet, but if any citizen would like to come forward, they have four minutes to address the board. Seeing no one come forward, we will close public address. Addendum.
No addendum this evening, Madam Chair.
All right, next, items of consent. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demonts?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, on to new business. First up, rezoning Roanoke Valley Holdings.
We usually don't vote on if we have opposition.
Right, right.
Yeah, I,
So we need a motion?
I would make a motion that we table it till we, till we can get some more, uh, information.
Marty, do we need to say a date?
Um, yeah, you, and you could do the motion to table both of those, I assume. You're talking about both.
At one time?
Yes, sir. And, and just, not table, but just, um, let's just move into the, the, to the December meeting, December 12th.
Have a motion by Mr. Supervisor Fidzikowski?
I just made a motion for the first one.
Do you want to amend that friendly a motion for two? Can we do that, or do they need to be separate?
No, I, I think we can do one motion for both. I mean, we're just setting them over to the 12th.
I'm just doing the one.
Okay.
Doing one, okay. I apologize.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
I just wanna clarify, you're just making a motion just for the one public hearing, not, I mean...
Yeah, for the rezoning of the Roanoke Valley Holdings.
All right. Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demonts?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes to continue.
Next, special use permit.
Make a motion to move it to 12th December.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demonts?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Fidzikowski?
No.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Six ayes, one no.
Reports. County attorney.
Uh, no report, Madam Chair.
County Administrator, Mr. Meadows.
Thank you, Chair Blevins. I do have a couple of items this evening. First, uh, as I shared with the board earlier today, uh, and as Mr. Ogle pointed out tonight as well, reassessment notices are going out. They started going out last week. Uh, we are still, uh, getting information, uh, on the reassessment. It appears that the average property value increase is about 33%. That's the number that we're seeing, uh, right now. Some are higher, some are lower. Uh, commercial is definitely higher. Um, so as we get more information, we'll be sharing that with the board, but, um, those notices are hitting mailboxes now, so, um, just wanted to make folks aware of that. Also wanted to, uh, first and foremost, thank Angie for covering for me at the last meeting. I went to VACO and trying to keep up with the ladies, uh, and all the meetings, and, and they kept going, and I, I fell out. I just, um, picked up a bug. I think I know where I got it, too. I think I got it from, uh, one of our friends in Rockingham County, but, um, anyway, thank you, Angie, for covering the meeting on my stead. We have a meeting tomorrow morning. Angie and I and Bree are meeting with our C T B representative to talk about transportation issues in the county. Looking forward to doing that. Uh, also, as you're aware, we are gonna reschedule the road viewers tour that we had scheduled, uh, for a Saturday or so ago. We'll be rescheduling that for the spring when we can, uh, get a better turnout. Uh, that'll also give us, uh, plenty of time to make sure we've got the roads that you guys wanna take a look at. Uh, we have another Passenger Rail Station Authority meeting this Wednesday. Things are on track. No pun intended, to keep that moving along, and looking forward to that. And lastly, um, look forward to meeting the new school superintendent. He'll be in town on Thursday, and, um, looking forward to having an opportunity to meet him and, uh, hopefully, uh, starting a good relationship with, with he and, and the staff that he puts together for the schools. And that's all I have this evening.
Very good. Uh, we'll start off Supervisor Demonts. Any reports?
I don't have a report besides to say thank you to all of you, and especially to Craig, Jen, and Josh for enabling me to participate virtually this evening. Thank you all so much.
Good. Supervisor Fidzikowski?
No report.
Supervisor King?
No report.
Supervisor Bone?
No report.
Supervisor Shepherd?
No report.
Vice Chair Biggs?
I don't have a report, just a statement, um, concerning the reassessment. I think we said this, or maybe I said it at the last meeting. Um, of course, the board is aware of, you know, what, what happened here, and we will be looking at that during the budget process. So if that helps folks out there to know that the board will be looking at that, maybe that will help. And that's all.
Thank you. Just wanna do a quick shout-out and congratulations to Christiansburg High School Demons, Regen 3D champions, and they'll play this Saturday. Wish them the best of luck, um, in Lynchburg. Uh, wanted to remind everyone, uh, this coming up Saturday is the 30th Annual Holiday Craft Show by the Christiansburg Lions Club at the Christiansburg Rec Center from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And that is the Lions Club major fu, uh, fundraiser, and, um, proceeds to those to our special projects of, uh, providing glasses and vision screenings, um, support, um, many of our scholarships and, uh, fire and rescue. So with the many good things that those funds go to, so we encourage everyone to come out and support that. And with that being said, we are adjourned.
That was loud.
All righty.